Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for September 20th, 2016. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, first we have open time for the public. Dan, you're on the agenda, so...
I am.
Marla? Please.
I'm Marla Hank Gilbert Road. I want to thank the town for their support of the residents of Gilbert Road following the September 11th Sunday morning microburst. Robert and Linda Downing, my neighbors at 65, would also want to extend their thanks to you. Chief Goyetz's crew or staff officers were fabulous, way beyond the call of duty. We couldn't believe the help. Charlie stopped by a couple times, Heather stopped by, Jackie was texting me. You know, it was a lot of support because it was really scary. After the electric company had done what it had to do, Randall Kemp's crew came and cleared up the road so we could get out and see over the piles of trees at the end of the driveways. And even though it's not directly here, I'd even want to say thank you to the man from Charter who found that the reason my cable didn't work was because when the tops of the pine trees split, they made spear-like shapes and plunged into the ground and cut my cable which was underground. So, so much for having the underground utilities to protect them. But, anyway, I want to thank our friends and neighbors who really helped, including brought a pie. It was wonderful. Thank you to everyone. And I'd also like to put an extra thank you, separate from the microburst, to Jackie, who has been helping me collect water for the testing that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is doing because I'm a chicken person from the city, so she would go with me down by the streams, and who even got licked by a cow for me. So, I really appreciate that. Thank you all so much for your support.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is Roy Bishop explained the pilot program for our project proposals before the town. This is relative to a solar operation, so...
It is. The two gentlemen from Origin Solar are here at the business house.
Please.
And they want to exit and begin again, so...
Yeah, just, we just had a session...
Who is "we"?
Beg your pardon?
Who is "we"?
The Board of Assessors...
Thank you.
...just had a negotiation session, let's say the first round, with these gentlemen, and I would just like to introduce them to the, to you. Both of them are from Origin Solar. Michael Wyman is the chief executive officer, and Tori Hannah is the business development local person that is involved in this thing. We had a rather, I think, successful negotiation this afternoon. There'll be negoti-- which Roy will delineate for you shortly. But we're trying to move this thing along, and I think it's an advantage to the town. And we're pretty much turning this over to the Board of Selectmen, even though we initiated it as the Board of Assessors, it's the Board of Selectmen who will be doing the actual execution of the agreement and the final negotiations. So, I just wanted to let you know that we've done this. Roy will take it over from here, but I wanted you to, you know, have a couple of faces to put to the names and, you know, what we're talking about here because this is a major project. It's about a four or five million dollar project that we're talking about here.
All right. Right now, the assumption's made that you believe the Board of Selectmen know what's going on with this. We have very little information whatsoever, so, yes, we do want to hear what is being proposed.
Do you want to, actually, I think probably the best thing to do is to bring Roy up here and let him explain it to you all. At this point, it's very premature to be discussing it with the applicants.
We're happy to do that. So, it's their project, it's their name, why don't you quickly introduce yourselves and run through their own business.
I think you can bring a little pitch and then, yeah, Roy can take your part.
All right, I need you to...
Do I just step to the podium?
Absolutely.
And the reason is that puts you on camera and it puts you on mic.
Perfect. Thanks for having us. I recognize one member of the planning board, Mr. Labrie. We had submitted a concept plan for a large solar farm out on 41 Valley Road back in November of last year. We presented to the planning board a very concept stage set of plans at that time. What does the town think about a solar farm? What kind of regulations would we be subject to? And it was a very beneficial meeting. Again, it was just in concept. The town had called it a pre-development meeting. We learned about the steps through which the project would need to go. We have since done survey work at the, at the land, at the parcel. We've done wetlands delineations, a bunch of site-specific, civil engineering-specific steps, and the project kind of has been on hold in terms of the special permit we'd be acquiring through the planning board for some time, to give the town some time to rewrite the solar bylaw, get some things in order on the project and on the civil engineering end of things. But we've recently introduced the pilot agreement to the town. This would be a levelized tax agreement, a kind of, a separate track that the project would need approvals for to, and Roy will dive into this, we've, we've submitted that to the Board of Assessors for preliminary analysis, and they'll present their analysis to you now for that pilot agreement. And you'll hear more about that. But we will be coming back in front of the town for a special permit, as well as some conservation permitting, hopefully before the end of the year as this project advances. But it's about a 10 to 14 acre solar farm. It's about a 2 megawatt project, again, up on 41 Valley Road, and we haven't submitted land use permitting. I just wanted to make that point. But that's a snapshot of where we're at. Hopefully, that helps to add some clarity.
Is that agricultural land?
Correct. It's forested land. It's forested land.
Okay.
We were also invited to the comment period with some other solar developers when the bylaw was rewritten prior to being approved at town meeting last May, which was a very great session. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission brought in a plan, I think the director, to help kind of add some new language, take out some old language, and revise that, that bylaw, which looks really, really strong now. Quick little overview there. Well, the chairman of the Board of Assessors just asked that we just provide a face with a name and say hello, so thank you for taking the time.
Oh, no, I think this is excellent.
Great.
I think Gary's idea is excellent. I have no problem with that.
Great idea.
It just is that the board is just, just becoming aware of this, except for Mr. Labrie.
Little context would be key, so, absolutely right. Yep.
Any questions? Whose land is this on?
It's on Monica Labrie. And actually, her, her son is, is here, John Labrie, who's been our contact, yeah. And for the record, Monica's a sweetheart, so...
Of course she is. She wants to put a farm.
Wonderful family. But, yeah, thank, thank you for your time and appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Great.
Anyone else?
I do, yeah.
I sent you a, a report. How did you read some of it?
Would you get Mike?
I can't stand it. Do you want to get one of mine?
Oh.
If we could make this work or something.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Paul, can you hear him on there okay?
I can turn it up.
All right, just turn it up.
There you go.
I don't want a workman's comp claim here based on...
Good, good. It's within my lifting limits.
My concern is...
I understand, but, okay. So, my understanding is this pilot program is basically going to be in lieu of taxes?
That is correct.
And so, basically, they're, they're looking for the town to lock them in at a, we'll say, tax rate that...
A solid payment that they can take to their investors as you would address the much operation.
Right.
In order to proceed, they need to have all of their eyes dotted in the T's for us, and obviously, the financial package requires some estimate of tax and tax bill moving forward. So, what happened is when, when the deregulation came in the eighties, Massachusetts legislation, legislature recognizing that there's very high capital costs to producing electric generation plants, provided for provision in Massachusetts law that allowed for basically an equalization tax over a period of years. And that's what we hear. So, with one exception, I would say of these, I would guess more than 70 solar projects in Massachusetts now of a commercial nature, at least the 35 that I've worked on, they have, every community has accepted a tax agreement pilot pay moving forward.
So, you're going to be basically establishing a net worth of this facility to us?
Actually, we moved past that, if I may. When this first came up three years ago, I don't know if you're aware, my business is helping assessors with, with valuation. I've been in South, I've been here for 20 years and a whole bunch of other places. And what happened was, this was all brand new to assessors. Solar, solar carve-out is only three years old. So, developers are coming in and saying, "We'd like the pilot," and assessors aren't on anything about it. Since I was at the ground and interested as an appraiser, I started to work on this on behalf of communities. I've also done some work on behalf of a number of solar companies, trying to get to, you know, what is the taxable entity that exists from, from a solar project. And it's extraordinarily difficult to pin down because in terms of coming up with a 20-year estimate of what value should be, we had no idea what the economic, the electric industry climate will be three years from now, or maybe five years from now, 20 years from now. And especially with solar projects, commercial solar projects in Massachusetts, they exist because of legislation that allows them to collect a fee above and beyond the sale of electricity for each megawatt electricity that they produce. That's a limited bite economic boom. At this point, it will, I think, for this project expires in seven years. So, in seven years, their income stream, assuming everything stays the same, will be reduced by about 70 or 75 percent. So, they're in essence trying to make back their investment in the first seven years of operation. So, when we figure all this in, it's relatively impossible to come up with a valuation schedule that will establish a value. So, for most of my communities that suggested we go with a pilot, is what it does is it avoids the necessity of having to bring in an expert to value such a unique property at least an annual basis. So, you would have a cost out of pocket analyzing the previous year's economic benefit of this solar to that company, and then coming up with an estimate of worth based on an income boost from that. As you can imagine, that would be, the sun doesn't shine, the, the value goes down, et cetera. So, and what I have done is developed a basic price per megawatt that has been pretty much established now. If you, again, read through my documentation, you'll see the range is from 11.5 to 12.5 per megawatt to about 18.5 out east. And why you get such a big shift in some of the values is some communities are in partnership with their solar developer, i.e., they're buying electricity, so they opted for a lesser dollar amount because they're getting a net present benefit from the assembly, using electricity. And some communities, when you get out to the east, communities investigating a pilot might have had a $25 tax rate, a split tax rate, which obviously would drive up your annual estimate of valuation over three years because of tax reasons. So, in western Massachusetts, right now, the last four, five solar pilots that have been executed have been for about $15,500 per megawatt measured in DC.
Per year?
Per year. So, if you don't have any questions about pilots in general...
One, one question.
Yeah.
You were saying four or five different places. Can we get the names of those?
Yeah, I sent you a report. Did you hear?
It's in the report?
It's in the report. Go to page six.
It's in your draft book.
The only which isn't in there is the, the two Palmer agreements, both for 15.5 are signed this week, so, that's as brand new as you can get. Sitting with the Board of Assessors, laying out all this, and they're an integral part of the process, even though the pilot negotiation is the province of the select board, and this does need town meeting approval, the, whatever the end product is, it does have to be administered by the Board of Assessors, though. What the Board has suggested and offered to you for, for your consideration is $15,500 per megawatt at the DC rate. I listed it as 2.4, I'm talking to John from Origin today, it's actually 2.5 megawatts DC. A two-and-a-half percent annual escalator, which mirrors the general property tax increase that most of your other constituents see. A $10,000 upfront fee, which would cover your legal costs and the $2,000 that I'm going to charge you for my consultation. Land will be specifically excluded. The land owner is not a power developer, and the ability to enter into a pilot agreement is solely between the town and an electric generation company. So, land will be assessed somewhere in plus $300,000. So, there will be a separate tax bill at whatever the fair market value of the 13 acres left that they want to have, times whatever the tax rate will be. I'm sure that cost will pass on through by the landlord and through the... And the only thing that I've left open generally to the companies that they'd like to have, the term of the pilot mirror the land lease, in this case, it's 20 years, and they would like a 20-year commitment on this.
Is there a bond relative to this?
It's not part of the pilot program. A bond for cleanup should be something addressed through, discuss a permitting process, conservation, planning, et cetera. It is quite common for one of those bodies issuing the permit to stipulate that a cleanup performance or after a, should be part of our settlement.
Charlie, that is part of the planning board process? It is? Okay, because I did not want to see us 20 years from now without the bond, without, in case we had a... At the end of 20 years, does this equipment revert back to the power?
Yes, so, this will not stop generating electricity in year 21, will not actually disappear. It will probably, without any improvements, still be generating somewhere in about 50 percent power range. It would then be assessed at compare cash value, as is any other property owner in town, probably on its, on its economic success at that time.
And the property owner is going to maintain the property to use?
Oh, if the, the developer will maintain the property. That's a question for this gentleman, but I would guess that...
Who's going to, who's going to own the property during this 20 years? The, the landowner?
The landowner owns the property. This will be a lease.
Okay, so, my, my question is, I guess, will these PV panels be high enough where agriculture can go on beneath them, or...
No, no.
Because...
However, I'm like the...
Because those are out there now.
Yeah.
Cows can graze underneath them, you can grow...
Yeah, this area will be fenced off. Every one that I've seen will be, has been fenced off for security reasons, and the panels, depending upon what tracking company they use, would be anywhere from 18 inches to four feet off the ground. So, mostly, they're just going to mow the grass.
Very low.
Yeah.
Probably look like Walthamsteyoff County Road over on the west side.
Yep, there's one in Agewong is very typical.
There's, there's some good ones where they put them up eight feet, and depending on the spacing, you can graze cattle, you can grow crops.
Okay.
We've, we've got projects up in Amherst that you can look at, but, you know...
Charlie?
Yes, Gary?
Just a couple of points of clarification. First of all, for anybody who didn't do the math yet, the 2.5 DC megawatts times 15,500 gives the town of Southampton $38,750 per year, plus the two-and-a-half percent increase over that 20-year period. Another thing is, I notice we keep throwing out the word pilot. This is not somebody who flies a plane. This is an acronym, acronym for payment in lieu of taxes. The other thing which Roy has emphasized with us, and certainly will with you, is that the town needs to be in a position where it has teeth in collecting. The pilot agreement is only as good as the agreement itself. What we are going to, what we intend to do as assessors is to actually send a tax bill. We will generate the equivalent value, real estate value, which will yield at a given year's tax rate, which will yield the payment that is due under the pilot agreement that you reach. The benefit of that is that now you can do a tax lien.
But the lien is going to be against the property owner? No, on the equipment.
No.
On the...
It's a separate bill.
This would be on the equipment, but... How do you put a lien on equipment if you don't have a...
If it's on lease.
There could be a deed for the equipment that we could put a lien on?
No, if I may, only, so, the Department of Revenue was determined that in order to administer a pilot, it does have to appear as a taxable value on the town's total risk. That was a, it was a change about two years ago. So, most communities have opted for putting, the equipment is personal property, and personal property value is sent out again, equalling the amount of pilot. The problem with that, however, is although the enforcement of the agreement would be the first order of, of compliance in terms of non-payment, there is no teeth in the collection process for personal property. Paying a personal property bill, the only, the only, the defense for the town is a small claims court, which no one does. If you send a real estate bill, the, by definition, real estate bill is now collectible and cleanable entity. So, hopefully, this will never happen, but Sun Edison did go bankrupt. They were a leading buyer of these processes, they're in bankruptcy now, and they, they have Palmer, have not paid a year's worth of property tax as personal property. This Palmer will get their money. It's a very valuable project. Someone will buy it out of bankruptcy and will satisfy all of the tax collection. So, at this point, Palmer's doing nothing. But in the event that that process goes on, if you have a real property account, there is teeth now in the law to lien property and move on to a collection process. So, it's kind of like a failsafe and backup. Either or, does it really matter as long as the bill is paid? Not lose.
So, you're taxing it like it is personal property, but you're putting it in a real estate tax bill?
That is correct, yes. So, we're going to envision you will get a line item representing a million dollar value times the tax rate which will go to...
So, that's the only way that you can do the lien, is because it's coming as a real estate tax bill?
Yes.
So, the property owner is getting their land assessed, and will also get the pilot money coming in?
Additional tax.
The, we'll create a separate interest in realty, and the pilot payment for the equipment will go directly to the ownership company.
So, there's going to be two tax bills generated on the same property? One's going to be for the land, and one's going to be for the equipment?
That is correct.
Two separate entities?
Two separate entities.
Okay, so, I'm assuming in the lease, there's going to be somewhere in the lease, and I guess that's somebody else's question, but if they default on the payments to them, they can put a lien on the property, too. So, there's two parties that are lienable, if that's a word. So, there may be conflicting issues there.
Absolutely, because I think anybody can put a lien on someone's property if money's owed.
I bet that's a good reason.
You don't even know. If they owe us money, then we can put a lien. If they owe them money, they're going to put a lien.
But you got, they got to owe you some money to put a lien.
If I can speak to the process for a moment, you have a town meeting coming up, and it is, if you desire the select board to make an offer similar to or exactly as is presented, I would suggest that it's over the select board signature. You send a memorandum of understanding. This is the terms that we will accept. I have already provided a sample copy of a, a pilot agreement in which you would just fill in the blanks, basically. Offer that for your council for review, as well as Origin's council for review, with the hopes that all of this could be wrapped up in time for gratification on October 18th, not October 18th, town meeting. It's a priority that for this company in particular, that we wouldn't want to wait six more months to be in limbo. And in the terms of the offer, generally speaking, if there's a six-month lag between approval from the select board and town meeting, I ask for the processing fee in 50% increments. Here, since it's so close to town meeting, that I would suggest that we would send a bill for that $10,000 immediately upon approval, and that the town would not sign the agreement until they get their processing check and then move forward.
Just for the boards aware, we do have in draft form an article for this town meeting, and we'll be reviewing it in our next selectmen's meeting for authorization. Now, who's the company again?
Origin.
Origin, and how long have they been around?
Six months.
Okay.
And a lot of them that.
Are you serious about short-term?
The entire industry is only three years old. Most of the companies that are in play today have been on for a year. It's all brand new.
Oh, there's some big ones.
And I will offer this, Origin is a developer, they will not be the one offering. Their intention is, as many of these projects have come to fruition in this fashion, their job is to make a shovel ready, and then they will sell to, and probably not a great company, but someone like Sun Edison, CBT, or players in the game that are much larger.
So, in this process, if we okay it to Origin, which is only six months old, and we'll have to do some due diligence, do we have any right to approve who they're selling it to, or...
No.
So, we got to think about that.
Will it be in a contract?
Well, in the contractual line, which specifically does say, stipulate that, you know, if you, if you buy me...
If it's to Sun Edison, I'm okay. If it's to Joe Smith, probably not okay, you know?
Well, again, it's, it's not something you're going to recap or over us, unless you put it in the agreement.
That's, that's what we'll have to do, yeah. Any other questions? Has Origin done any other projects around here?
Oh, yes, they've done half a dozen. They have Westfield, Agewong, they have, they have one in, under X in, Hancel, I forget the name of this, they, they have six.
Are the, the list in the, what you gave us?
No.
Can you provide us?
It was what they told me verbally tonight, so we certainly can ask to them.
Have they actually completed projects, or they sold everyone of them?
They still design, all is done. So, they're in the process of putting together.
So, can we get a list of that?
Can I ask them?
Okay. We'll have to ask them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Bishop?
Well, my question, again, looking at ENP, is there a possibility in terms of expediting this, that you, as a select board, could ratify the terms as offered to you so that we can begin to move this process forward? The question you have about validation and, and contractual lines would be set, too. So, is there a possibility that the board could ratify this potential thing, so we can send a memorandum of understanding and get this process going? ENP is a month away.
So, you said what was on the agenda for, was it for us to review this content?
It's to review all the articles for the town meeting, and this is one of the articles. My understanding is you're asking us to basically give you a nod that we want to go forward with this, but we don't have town meeting approval to go and sign any contracts.
No, 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 but you need to have the agreement in place prior to going through the ratification. Okay, so, what I'm suggesting here is that unless you have an objection to any of these terms, that the select board take that into consideration so that we can offer a memorandum letter to Origin, and then they can say, "Yes, we'd like this." They may want to come back with a counter, although our point of discussion is our that for the most part, this is acceptable to them, but if we don't move, we lose a week, we lose two weeks, and now you won't get this done for the ENPs.
I understand, but you put this in front of us tonight, and I would like myself to have at least until next week to look this over. At least, yeah, I mean, there may be terms that we have questions on. Dana?
Heather, what's the cutoff for the, you know, warrant on the...
The warrant is to sign next week.
So, why... So, why is it coming, why is it coming just this week to us?
Well, there's two things. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Why is it just coming to us this week with a rush behind it?
They just come forward.
I mean, putting the article forward is easy. Put the article forward, if we find out we don't want to move this forward, we table it at the town meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say, because we've got to be able to speak intelligently at the town meeting about it.
Right, but if we bring this contract in front of ourselves next week, we can make a decision if we feel this is going to work.
Well, if we get it, yeah.
I think it's plenty of time for all of us to read, review, and make a decision on what we want to do by next week, whether or not we want to go forward, we don't, and if we have additional questions.
Well, do we need to talk to legal on it too? I mean, I don't know it till I see it.
I understand.
I mean, you know, we'd have to see it, go from there, so I can't give you an answer right now.
I don't have a problem with reviewing it and giving my opinion by next week on whether I think it's good or not. I'm not saying that we would sign a contract, but.
Do I hear a motion to put this on the agenda for next week?
So moved.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Heather, please.
Karen?
Try to wrap this up.
Yeah, definitely. I think if you got a procedure here that I'll have the assessors put this over there ahead, you already have a copy of the, did I give that to the hard copy or email for?
You gave it, I don't know, but I added it in package, so they all have it in their bag.
So, they're all in the standard. The offer is a, actually, top of the page, is your term, it's the top of the page document. It was written for the town of Goshen, it's fairly standard, so all of the tools you fill the blanks. If there's something you want to add to that, you know, depends on you. I did take the liberty of offering it's a public record to, in order to expedite this to Origin, so if they do begin their review of the document.
That's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's right.
All right, next time you send the.
Excuse me, I didn't want to be rude and interrupt anybody, but I didn't hear anybody close the public time comment. I was waiting for that. Is it closed? Did anybody make a motion?
Do you wish to speak publicly?
Yes, could I please?
Please.
How you doing? Wayne Thero, 3737 Coleman Road. I was here tonight just to make sure that are we finally taking a step forward and doing the right thing for the townspeople here in Southampton with the current fire chief? Are we finally addressing the problems or are we going to keep sweeping it under the rug?
I don't think we addressed it.
Just a question, I mean.
Did we address it yet tonight? I don't even think we've gotten to that.
I don't even know what he's referring to.
Do you have anything in particular?
Yeah, tonight you went into executive session, did you not, concerning a matter?
Actually.
Okay, so when is that going to be addressed and, does the current fire chief have a contract with the town?
Which question would you like answered first?
How come we didn't go into executive session tonight with the fire chief?
We did not have enough.
We did not have a quorum.
I came in late, so that would be me.
No, I, no.
That's okay, I'm just answering, yeah.
Okay, second question, does the current fire chief have a contract?
Current fire chief is operating under the past contract.
Okay, is he required to live in town or is he allowed to live five miles within the station or is?
He still goes by the previous contract until a new contract has been negotiated.
Okay, does he have a time limit on that before we are in, you know, like there's?
He operates under the old one until we have a new one established.
So, he can just continue to be an employee at will, basically, under the old contract and nothing gets done? We still continue to have, basically, nothing?
I don't know if there's a timeframe.
I think we all know what we're getting to here. I mean, enough of sweeping things under the rug, okay? I mean.
Yeah, I think that's your terms and we're doing what needs to be done, sometimes in executive session, sometimes out here, but we're working on all contract issues, so we can only tell you so much.
So, all the previous things that we've swept under the rug, all of the sworn statements to the town attorney, all of the police reports, none of that matters to the people that pay taxes and depend on him to do his job.
I would disagree with you, but you're welcome to ask individuals. We think it's pretty important, all that stuff.
Well, we're getting nowhere, I mean.
Again, it's an opinion and we're going to disagree probably with you and we have to go through the due process.
It's just amazing. I don't think the townspeople of Southampton, the taxpayers, or anybody in need for that matter should be, you know, suffering the way they do, I'll say. This is atrocious, it really is, and everybody knows what I'm talking about here, okay? All right, keep sweeping it under the rug. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. Amazing.
Is there anyone else that would like to be addressing this board for open time for the public?
You have your spot.
You're on the agenda, we purposely got you on the agenda. So, if not, then I'm closing.
Right.
Maybe.
Mr. Gwinner, thanks for coming in.
Ed Gwinner, going in circle, we're back here again about the driveway issues and I don't know how long your agenda is tonight.
May I, I understand you want to talk about the driveway issues. You do realize that's been tabled and it's not coming up at tonight's meeting. That's still going under review. I personally have pulled that file out because I heard the comments and I'm trying to get some time to sit down with Mr. Kemp to discuss this more thoroughly, so there's nothing going on with that tonight.
Don't you want our input?
I thought.
Mr. Pellegrini has a list of questions and some suggestions.
The public time for that was, what, two weeks ago or so? And then we left it open for emails to come in so that we could spool stuff together. Yeah, I understand, and I got all the emails that everybody sent that went to the board of selectmen. If you have more, please feel free to get this sent up to me, but I don't, we didn't put that in the agenda because of the fact that we're still reviewing it. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to present that, I believe it was a bunch of signatures asking for the driver regulations to be removed and not considered until they're brought forward to the town, their kind of laws and bylaws and make sure that it affects the resident in town, so it should be voted upon by the town whether we need it or not, and then a regulation should be put in place for, we draft a regulation, bring a regulation in front of the town, and a vote on it. That is a petition that is signed by a bunch of people in town asking for that process to be followed.
How many people signed this?
What did we get to on it?
Give me a guess.
Only 30 on our, pardon?
Well, personally, myself, I have, I have no problem with going in front of town meeting for both, that doesn't bother me. I just want to make sure that the product is right.
Absolutely understand, that's what our concern has been.
Stand up here.
And absolutely, that is what our concern has been in reviewing of these bylaws, there are a lot of things that we feel can expose this town to legal litigation, which we are not looking forward to. So, we're just trying to look to solve the problem and that was what we wanted to discuss with Randall this evening or when it came up to the agenda was what are you trying to solve? What are we trying to solve? If it's flow of water off of driveways, okay, that's one thing, but the way the regulation's written, it encompasses a lot more than that. And then the other thing that I would ask is being a landowner in town and actually had a, wetlands created by the highway department from draining the town road, town water onto my property, and then it would come off my property, and what they decided to do, instead of just having a flow down the street properly, they dammed up my property. And I have pictures of that and actually brought it to the conservation commission and they allowed me to wipe that out and take that out because it was a man-made created. So, the question I'm getting and the concern that I have is it's okay for the town to worry about a little bit of water coming off a driveway onto the town roads, which is very limited salt and chemical, but it's okay to take full towns roads, dump it onto a property without looking at that property. So, what I'm asking for is we look at an encompassing program on water management and stormwater runoff for driveways and town roads, if that is truly the concern of what this regulation is here for.
How does the board feel, one? If this material is scanned in by Heather and sent to all of us, including Mr. Kemp? Does that work for everyone?
Oh, God, yes.
That's fine.
I'd like to see it.
No, that's the first part. The second part is putting a small mini committee together.
Another committee. I love it.
Well. As long as it's open in the public.
Exactly.
The reality of it is, they have more expertise than we have expertise. We need the highway superintendent involved, but there's going to be other entities involved and I don't see a reason why a small group can't get together as a hat, ad hoc committee.
Primarily the ones that have to abide by it, so I think that would be a good idea.
And hash this out.
I'd be open for it.
One question I have is, we need a committee that's made up of maybe the builders and some landowners and Randall because we don't want to have it, I think now it's heavy on the wrong side.
I'm a landowner, I'll go to their meetings.
I think it should be both, both parties.
I just want to say something.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
For you guys, if on Coleman Road, Dave Garsky's job tomorrow, you want to see a nightmare that this kid has caused?
What kid? What kid?
Just superintendent.
I thought you were talking about David.
No, nothing. David's a kid. Listen, you wouldn't believe this, we're going to grade it tomorrow and there's a two-foot swale in between these two houses. It's okay for now, but the poor guy who has to own that house and all that shit comes off that road, races down in there and fills his backyard up and runs in his cellar, there's Dave Garsky and Gary's Construction Heritage standing there because we're all going to get sued.
What's the address?
It's right on Coleman on the corner. It's ridiculous. And this kid won't sign off on nothing because he don't let the water running in the road. Put a catch base in there.
Coleman and what, Ridge?
Take a ride around town. Do you see all the water running back into somebody's property and off the road into somebody's property? Dave, he's going to get sued over this, and you mark my words, he's going to get sued. Because in the winter time, when the ground's frozen, the water's going to go, all the salt is going to go down there, the dirt is going to go down there, and the guy's going to have no grass, and Dave's going to get sued.
So.
This is crack of shit. This is, this is ridiculous. Who ever heard of this, Charlie? You've been around a long time.
I'm listening, you know I'm listening.
This is absolutely crazy.
The problem is, as I see it, it's like all of a sudden this is all surface, no pun intended.
Well, no, but we're the guys who got a great deal, lots of plant grass now.
Yep.
But the thing is, Charlie, if we hadn't been tipped off that this was coming, this would have skated through and we would have been paying the bill, and that leads into the other things when I get my time I want to talk about, it's, you know what, if there's a need for regulations, be open about it. Discuss it with the town. Do not have a small subcommittee meeting in a back room coming up with regulations that are stricter than the state curb cut onto a state highway for residential. It's, and then on top of that, you should absolutely exempt the subdivisions that are already out there from any new rules, just like as when you do a preliminary for a subdivision, all the rules freeze, at that point a preliminary is done. So, now I've got hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in a subdivision and potentially have to deal with this new rule that may make some of those lots unbuildable. Because we cannot have a two percent.
First of all, there is, there is no new rule.
Okay.
No, but this guy, hey, Charlie, this guy's running around, this guy's running around, giving Dave a hard time, saying, I'm not signing off on that, and now we got to regrade everything because all that water's got to go in back of these houses. Okay, you guys want to do it, let's start with your house, I'll be over tomorrow and do, let me do your front yard, we'll do the same thing, how do you like it? This is what this kid is doing.
I don't think we're disagreeing with you. We want to have the committee so that both sides can get to go.
It's a lot of action because it means a lot of money.
So, so let me ask the committee this, the board, does the board want to make a motion to establish an ad hoc committee to review the driveway?
I want to be the president.
You can't be president.
I want you guys to come over tomorrow, come on over tomorrow, over on Coleman Road, I want you to see this. Come on. Let's see if you want to buy this house. It's our enough sound house, you see if you want to buy this house.
That's not a building.
Absolutely.
Everyone else's, you might as well.
Hold on, Charlie, I don't know who that gentleman is who just spoke, he never said his name.
Sir, can we have your name and address, please?
Yes, please.
Address?
County Road, 246 County Road.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gail Santoro, 83 Pleasant Street, probably going to shock you because I'm going to speak in support of the builders, probably, but I just think, you know, as a town, I've been struggling since I came here to, with the planning board and the Concom and just about everybody, to try and put some kind of guidelines in for new construction. So, I'm happy that we're doing that, but I don't want to hobble the development of the community. You know, when we're talking about grades and swales are a science and I'm, I don't know who in our town has that expertise, but if we're going to put demands on builders that will then transfer to increase costs for homeowners, then I think we want to know what we're doing and specifically what we're doing. And the other thing is, is open meeting, open meeting. If you're going to deliberate, I don't care if you're a group of six people from six different committees, I would say you probably constitute a public body when you're talking about these things, even though you're a group. And for God's sake, I mean, let's, let's, you know, what does it hurt? It slows it down, I guess you have to take people into consideration. But as someone who's adjacent to a new community where there weren't guidelines in particular, I still have runoff, everybody wants to say they can't help me, I still have issues, nobody can help me. So, if we put those regulations in, they need to have some teeth to them, right? So, I would just, I would just make a plea for open meeting laws because if we don't do it, the A G will get involved, because we're going to have open meetings here, open meetings till everybody's sick of open meetings. It has to be that way, because if you don't do it, then everybody thinks something's up, you know what I mean?
I agree with you on that.
Why create an image that something's up when you can just be open? I understand, you know, the democratic process is sticky and it's slower, but I would plead for that. The other thing is, is when you're considering regulations on new construction, now they're going to all start growling at me, is you've also got to consider the demand on the water supply. The aquifer here only has so much water in it, and if you're on town water or you're on your own well, you're not safe on your own well. Think of this as a big container of water and there are so many straws in the water, you know, and you keep adding more straws, you're going to draw that water down faster and faster and faster. We've had a couple tri-seasons, so we feel it, and I know water costs are going to go up, everybody's going to get a bigger water bill than they're used to, a little more expensive water bill, and that may continue. But I think as we go forward to develop, and certainly I'm not suggesting this for the communities that have been approved because it's not fair, but as we go forward, let's consider, can we afford eight more houses? Oh, man, we're going to get 10 grand a piece in taxes. Yeah, but you're going to pay 20 grand a piece in pressure on the town, and we just really have to pay attention to that. Lots of towns do put moratoriums on buildings until they figure out what's going on with the water and get some official advice. We certainly had advice, we've certainly had advice from other people that this is important to our community. One more thing, I was told that Woodmore Estates had permission to water whenever they wanted and they have watered whenever they want it, and I just want to be clear, I was told by Tom at Water that they'd paid, I don't know, $150 an outlet. Who meters the water? That water's that huge beautiful tree and bush thing he's put in the middle of that cul-de-sac. Are we getting paid for that or am I paying for Chet Kellogg to water that property? Because I don't get a straight answer from that. So, I'd like somebody to just find that out and make it clear, because I don't mind paying for the water I use, I do my every other day, I put it on at four in the morning and stuff like that. I don't mind, I understand it's a water shortage, but it should be for everybody and everybody should have to pay for it.
What was your name?
Oh, Gail Santoro.
Thank you.
You want to send a memo to the water department as to if it's metered, just so that we know? I suspect it is.
Mr. Chair, I can answer that.
It's metered, it's metered in Bill.
It is metered.
Okay.
The water commissioner over there. I'm upset, like some of these people are, that this was all done, and it would have slid under the rug unless I caught it in the town clerk's office. I'm the one that alerted these people.
So, you're the one?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
He's the good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You've gone back and forth, I can't tell you how many years.
People have owned land in Southampton for years and paid taxes on it. Now you might be taking it away from them. It's got to be something that people can work with. Thank you.
I, speaking for myself, believe the board hears you, and what we need is a subcommittee to look into this.
To represent both sides, so we can come up with something fair on both sides.
Right, so does the board wish to establish an ad hoc committee to review the driveway policy?
I'm in favor.
I'll make a motion, we do that with the inclusion that we make sure we have good representation from the builders and homeowners and the public in general, because it's going to affect everybody.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, my discussion would be limited to five people.
Oh, boy.
You have a representative from this board, and I'd like to be that representative.
You want to be a representative of this board?
I would like to.
A volunteer?
I will volunteer.
Write that down.
Let me, while we're discussing it, well, let me discuss, because if you say...
I'm a volunteer from the town.
If you say five, yeah, if you say five members, you're going to have people fighting out over there, because you need more than five members.
I do seven.
Unless you, unless you allow everybody to come in and talk to the committee, that's fine, but you just can't keep it with five members. You've got to have all the input.
I think you can have a seven-member committee, but you can have it open to where other people can come in.
I'm fine with that, as long as everybody gets a chance to...
I think a member from the select board, maybe a member from the fire.
We need Randall.
So that's three, right there, and then...
Builders' representative?
Do the police need to be involved with this, or do, for, I mean, usually the fire looks like...
Fire, I can understand.
So fire.
Fire and highway, yeah, police, I don't think so.
Fire, highway, and then maybe some...
Two from the, two from the builder's side and two from the town's side? That makes nine, no, that makes seven.
Seven, I think seven would be good.
All right, seven.
So Charlie, I mean, I've got to pay that driveway tomorrow, I just can't put the driveway in regular like we all been doing it for the last 47 years.
No regulation?
There's no regulation, so yes.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to...
You kid in the back, he's doing...
But you may want to stay, you may want to stay in the right section.
Okay, so we can do, there's nothing there that says they've got...
Randall, Randall's supposed to give the approval on those, that's his jurisdiction, not ours, okay?
I mean, it's just, the water flows downhill, can't build.
Randall's the one that gives the final, Gary, it's not us.
Yeah, I know that, I know, but...
But right now, the policy is basically discretionary based on the highway superintendent.
Okay, but I mean, he can't say, hey, you've got to put this swale in the bottom of this driveway to deflect the water, because I don't want it in the road.
Have you spoken to him?
Have you spoken to him?
Well, he signed off, so...
So he's signed off on it?
So you're all set, then?
There you go.
You have to talk to the kid.
We're going to put a driveway there.
You just... I know I have a motion on the floor, but Gary doesn't understand that.
All right, well, you know, start putting swales in driveways and all this others, you know.
Why don't you call the vote?
Sit down. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And do we need a motion to put Jim on it, or are we just...
I'd need to take a motion to make James LeBree representative for the town.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll be in favor.
Call in favor, aye.
How does the board wish to go about calling the rest of these positions? Because you said how many folks, but you didn't say how someone applies, where they send it, when it's going to be appointed, any of the other additional information that might be...
Why don't you have...
The applications need to be submitted within next week, they'll be submitted to the town administrator's office, appointment will be made by the board's selectman at our next meeting.
On the, the next one, which is a special next week, or the next original on October 4th?
No, just put them on the next one.
30th.
And would we...
27.
Email as a...
I'm sorry?
Do we just submit an email?
There's, if you go onto the website, we have a volunteer application form, if you fill that out, either electronically, email it, drop it off, what have you, we're generally here, and worse comes to worse, if you have to drop it off and no one's in the building, you can always use the tax collector's box outside and they'll deliver it to us on Monday.
I sell technology for a living.
All right.
My next question?
No, you're not.
You are not, next.
I would like some opinions from these gentlemen, I saw my subjects.
Well, I...
Red's got to get up her.
This is the end of open session. Unless, John, you need something to be said, because at the rate I'm going here... Do you like this?
Aren't we all?
Heather, town administrator?
Yes, thank you. All right, so a couple things, go over procurement, I just want to give the board a few updates. Handrails have been completed, they are installed outside, if you walk by, you now have a nice handrail in front of the bushes. We actually completed this project under budget, the projected cost was a little over 11,000, we came in under 10,000. So we are finishing that up, we're, we're kind of excited about that, we think from everything we've seen, it looks like they did a great job on the project, and they did it all in one day onsite. Charlie definitely gets kudos, because he was present to have this done.
I'll call you year-old Charlie for nothing.
Going backwards to the police door, if you remember, several months ago, we actually had a special town meeting article, I believe it was, that was put on for the purpose of appropriating funds to allow the police department to reconstruct in one of the garage door area bays, and make a wall and extra entrance for booking, this was a requirement by the state from their inspections. We have finally been able to move forward, we have all our quotes, purchase orders have all been issued, and the police chief is working on arranging work at this point. So we should see results in that shortly, hopefully. HVAC for the library, that went out to bid on the 11th, I believe it was, I believe it was the 11th, whatever last Monday was. Request for documents so far has come in from 14 companies. Some are from Mass, Springfield, Worcester, some are from Connecticut, and we've had one as far away, so far as I think Ohio. So they are, they are interested in the documents, we have not received any bids yet, but there is a mandatory walkthrough, so we'll see how many people show up for that piece, and that's coming up, if not this Monday, the following one, so it's coming up very quickly. I don't know if we will have a solidified answer for, we definitely won't for next Tuesday for the special town meeting warrant, but we will have a range of what the max is, and come town meeting on the floor, we will know exactly what the lowest bidder's numbers are, so if we need to modify, we can always do so. And I believe on that front, capital improvement committee is meeting later this week to review this as one of the items.
What date that was?
Friday, 6, I don't know if it's 6:00 PM, but I think your Fridays are now booked, Charlie.
I know, that's it, this Friday.
Yes. Kona Park Pavilion Roof, I spoke to Mark Reed again yesterday, he is still working on the specs for that, that was a project that was approved, I believe by CPC for the funding piece on that one, and we're just waiting on specs so we can figure out what we need and when we can go to bid, and so forth. Whittmore Bridge is currently in hold, we need to work further with East Hampton on pushing that forward. School capital projects, they had three, if you recall from annual town meeting, one was projectors for the classrooms, they are in the process of moving forward, they have a purchase order for that piece. Laptops are still working with the school administration to get ahold of the information relative to the state contract numbers, and the electric, deactivated doors for the Norris School Building, we are currently working with IRS to get their updated quote, breaking down what we need, and we'll move forward with those pieces. So hopefully, everything will be ordered by the end of this month, and be installed early October. Community compact cabinet grants, couple updates here, government structure charter grant, I met with Bernie Lynch, our consultant on this project, last week, he's working on finalizing the government structure review, and working on his conclusions and recommendations. And the draft charter, he's hoping to meet with the select board end of October 1st to November, he wants to get through town meeting first, and then sit down with the board in open time, do a slideshow presentation, and give you the report, hopefully ahead of time so you can read and ask questions. The HR, wage and classification piece, this was another one of our community compact cabinet grants, this one's with Don Jacobs, as you may recall, we are still working on that. I did meet with Don today, there's been some concerns about what he is or he isn't doing, and the progress he is or isn't making on this piece. I think this is a satisfactory way to move forward, but I'm kind of hoping the board points me in the right direction that they wish to go. There are numerous job descriptions from general government, police, fire, highway, all the sorts, and the conversation we had today is setting up essentially a seven-day period for each set. The idea would be, he would send me a set of job descriptions, I review with my comments, then I send them to simultaneously the select board and the personnel board for their review to respond only to me, so we have a collection of comments. I send it back him, back to him for one more correction piece, we send it back to the employer and employee for final review and sign off, and then move forward. If the board has any better suggestions on how to do that, I'm willing to listen and happy to move this in any which direction, but I think by doing that, we take things in smaller chunks, it gives everyone essentially a seven-day window to review things, and although it's going to be a lot of work, because these aren't small, they're not short, and we're looking at probably about seven at a time, seven, every seven days is still better than 100 or so in a week or two weeks, so. The goal, based on our calculations, and we're done, is with his piece, we should have this finalized and ready to be presented by, to the board on, I think I have, November 29th. It's one of those months that we have three week, three meetings that month, so.
Seven in seven days, and we've got to get them to you, so you can summarize them, so we don't get seven days.
No, you do get seven days, John, I get them today, I have seven days to review, then you get them at, you get them next Tuesday, and you have seven days to review.
So you review them for a week, then we review them with your comments?
Yes.
And they go back to where?
You.
And then they go back to the consultant once we're done with it.
To be reviewed for another seven days?
You won't see our comments?
No, I will, so you're absolutely right, just for clarification, so I will send them out to you and the select, and the, hi, select board, are you the select board, are you sure? And the personnel board simultaneously. You both would have, I haven't written this by art yet, but this is the goal, you'd both have seven days to look at and get any comments back to me individually, without, you know, you can't discuss and so forth. You get them back to me, whatever comments, I modify, I send them back to Don, Don edits, we send it to the employer, employer for any last-minute concerns, issues, what have you, and they sign off. I don't anticipate a lot of these are going to have issues, I do imagine one or two are going to be controversial and may require a meeting actually to figure out where to go with it, but for the most part, everything, employees and employers alike have had input on all of these.
So we won't see each other's comments, nor will we see yours.
Well, I can send you back a finalized version, once the comments are in, once they've been reviewed and accepted.
But they're already sent off to the consultant?
Well, I can send them back, I can do this however you want to do it, John.
So is there a reason why we all can't discuss it or see each other's comments? Is there a reason for that?
It's a violation of the open meeting law.
Well, if we did it at an open meeting.
An open meeting?
Well, here's the problem, Shannon, to do it in, to do it in open meeting, we're going to have to have a meeting every single seven days until November 29th, I don't like you that much.
I don't like you that much, so maybe you don't have to show, I'm just saying.
Ladies, let's not go there.
There's a lot of love here.
So, but I guess, I guess the thing is, it's every seven days, so the idea is to try to break this down to many pieces, if there's any that you guys get to and controversial, my hope is, by the time I get them, before I even send them to you, there's nothing else to add.
Hopefully, yeah.
That's my goal.
I mean, let's try a batch, and maybe take the lower...
Well, the first set is going to be the town clerk, the treasurer's office, town clerk's office, treasurer's office, and assessors.
Okay.
Because those are the ones, I had them send me today.
Okay. Now, these job descriptions, I'm trying to remember the details, but are they mostly coming from the consultant after talking to the staff member, or is it, did he take the staff member's job description, saying, here's what I do, and kind of rubber stamp it and send it on?
So the consultant took his template, he sent them to the employee and the department head.
So it was a blank template, put this, this, and this?
Nope, he, he would, he had some standardized ones for, you know, what a general job description is for an assessor.
Okay.
He then sent it to the employee and to the board of assessors for their review, they send it back to them with comments, if they had any, he revised, sent it back to them, they're happy.
So he started off with a sample that he thought would fit the job, and they were able to make suggestions?
As needed, yes. That wasn't the case in all of them, sometimes, like the library, he just had a blank questionnaire and said, you know, I don't have any templates for this, fill out this, and we'll derive the job description based on this piece.
But upfront, he got copies of their job descriptions first, before he made the template out?
I don't know if that was the case in all, depends on if the department head sent him when he asked for it.
Okay, well, hopefully, it's kind of hard to know the whole job without talking to the employee.
He's met with everybody.
Yeah.
So whether it's been, receive the job description, or he's physically met with each individual.
I mean, the bottom line, when we get out of this, is the employee should be satisfied with their own job description as well as us.
Mm-hmm.
That's accurate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'm willing to try a batch.
Yeah, we'll start down that road, and we can always make it as required.
So you'll get your first batch from me next Tuesday, if not sooner?
Yeah.
If that works. Okay. Let's see, that's that piece, all right, upcoming weeks, or actually last two weeks ago, we did an MMPA training, that actually was pretty good, we went over FMLA, where FMLA leaves off, ADA picks up, and we talked about the Fair Standards Labor Act, that was additional and interesting information, I was not aware of that, apparently I am the one to oversee FMLA in the town, we did not have that very clearly spelled out anywhere, so I'm learning as we go on this piece. The next one is chapter 40 training, I did your chapter 40 training, 40B training last night, out of North Hampton Senior Center, it's actually very interesting information, the biggest thing takeaway is, there is technical assistance available to the zoning board of appeals, if they're ever interested, if they haven't worked on any of these applications, if they think they're ever going to get any, or if they just want a refresher. Finances, they did finance, we did a finance meeting check-in first Tuesday of the month, that's going well. Next month, we'll be looking at the audit review to go over the audit and changes that they had recommended. Building maintenance, my favorite topic, so the board is aware, I believe, I've sent numerous updates on the HVAC system, we just love the HVAC system, it makes us so happy to talk about it. So we discovered an interesting piece this week, Charlie said he did not know this either, but apparently we have proprietary software, if not additional circuit boards and so forth, from the HVAC system we currently host in this building. We have a company that is not the one who installs these items and materials.
The original installer, we did not hire, we now have a new company maintaining the system. The new company cannot utilize their software in this system, and because, I guess it was a motherboard that burned, they had to replace it with the original, which means we go back to the original company, or supplier, to get that.
Well, that's not unusual, I hate to say.
And none of us were ever thinking about that.
Well, when, when the bid spec was put out, that's where we needed to put, it had to be software serviceable by multiple companies. You run into that with elevators, too, and it just ties you up for years.
We'll have to look at what we did for HVAC for the library.
Better check our elevator contract.
Oh, we're stuck on that one.
Well, we ought to think about this with the library contract we're coming into. Make sure we don't have any proprietary software there.
Yeah.
Take a look.
My understanding is, that's going to be mostly gutted, though.
That's going to what?
Of what they put in, you don't want proprietary.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting at.
You don't want them to say, "You have to only use Crayola when we want to use Rosy," like options. Okay, next thing here, fire sprinkler tests we did. We had an issue downstairs where we have to replace some batteries, I believe, in the boiler room, which I think we had to replace batteries in a different room last year, so we're, we're rotating through. So that piece is pretty much good. And the other thing I have on here, just to let you guys know, when we're working on budgeting for next fiscal year, we might want to start keeping in our back of our heads about having some kind of maintenance position, because we're starting to get to the point where myself, my assistant, Randall, and Paul are spending all of our time on the HVAC system, which we, we're more than happy to learn, but we're just not there yet. Okay, some other ongoing projects. Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Police is still outstanding. We're working on that. Greenway, there will be an article before the town for CPC, for additional funding on that piece. For those who may recall, or I don't know if I discussed it here before, a couple of years ago, when the Greenway provisions were actually approved at town meeting, I believe it was 2012, so it's not about right, 2012 town meeting, for that purpose, there was actually provision for attorney's fees and so forth that were associated with the land grant provisions. And since the town decided to, that they wouldn't be able to pursue or complete the land grant in a specified amount of time, they said to the state that we are, we are happy to return our receipt of this grant to you, back to you. And in doing so, we actually turned the provisions we had previously been allotted the funds in over, and we can no longer access legal funds from that article. So we had to start again. So that's what you'll see before CPC. Green Communities, we're at the point we just need to do our 20% reduction plan, and we're waiting on the school from the consultant for the evaluation for that piece. Payroll Sheets, this was a project that Donna has been working on for quite some time. This is something that the auditors have been on us for quite some time, having a spreadsheet that essentially acts as a database of all the employees, when they were hired, amount of vacation and so forth, based on the new personnel rules. We're having a slight bit of confusion in evaluating what the vacation provisions state. Donna, myself, and Art met this morning, and I think we're getting closer to clarification, but if it takes three of us to figure it out, we might have to put it back before the PPB and the Select Board on this specific piece to understand what is, what is what. So at this point, we are working through a couple scenarios, for examples, to see if we can hash it out amongst ourselves, and then we'll present it to the Select Board and Personnel and see if everyone's in agreeance, if that is in fact the interpret, the meant-to-be interpretation. And that's all I have on here. Any questions for me?
Nope.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Select Board Updates, Liaisons. Anybody have anything?
Nope.
Uh, nope. Got a meeting on Thursday with the FinCom and MPI next Wednesday, but that's it.
All right. Well, let's start with the Board of Health. The Board of Health is having a meeting next week to discuss the transfer station. They appear that they wanted to basically operate it. We've tried to set up some meetings with them, and they just are not available. I intend to go to their meeting on the 28th. I will be very blunt about this. If they really want control to operate it in its entirety, aside from the enterprise account, I don't have an issue with that. We can transfer Randall's responsibility to the Board of Health.
Why would we want to?
Well, the issue becomes, we can't have two gatekeepers, no pun intended. So I'm going to the meeting. I'm throwing this at you so you know what's going on. Not looking for a decision or direction or anything tonight, but I want you to be aware of this.
So would there be separate staffing? Are they going to still use the staffing from the Highway Department?
I would think that they would use the two individuals that work at the transfer station, and that's it. Anything on the Highway Department's side would have to be paid out of the enterprise account, just as the Water Department shares the Highway Department.
So those employees would technically work under the Board of Health, then?
No, they would technically work under the Highway Department, but they would be assigned to assist the Board of Health when they need assistance. Like, say, for instance, they got to roll over the compost or something like that. You bring the payloader in, you roll it over.
And you charge them for it.
And you charge them for it.
I, I mean, off the top, I can't see why we'd want to transfer it, so I definitely want to look into it. But my understanding is they cut the O-Locks off and put new Paddlelocks on, that they have control of?
That's correct.
Which I don't agree with at all. I mean, it's, it's just trying to roll over.
Worth a discussion. It's worth a discussion.
Well, we've tried to bring them in to have a discussion, and we haven't had any luck of bringing them in.
Well, right now, Randall has control over it, correct? I mean, it's his, we, we have given him control, and he's had control over it for.
He operates it.
Right. So he has, does he have a key to get in?
I'm assuming they put new key, the new locks in, and they printed, I guess, 20-something keys.
20-something keys. And they did that why?
Because they felt that people had access to the transfer station that shouldn't be operating in there, shouldn't be in there.
So what was there more than 20 keys before?
Requested, uh, Randall to put locks?
I don't know. This is all, I'm getting circumstanced information. It's not like we've had a meeting and discussed it. That's the reason I want to go to their meeting on the 28th, because we've tried talking to them, and they don't have time to come to talk to us.
I'll try to go to that, too.
Yeah. The, the easy questions are to Randall, do you have a key to get in, and do you have any restricted access, or they just change him and give you a key, because, you know, if he has no key, I say we cut the locks off, he paddlelocks it.
I believe, I, he must have a key, or I would have already heard about it.
Well, that's, that'd be nice to check, because I don't think they have a right to go in there and do that, at least without a discussion and agreement. You?
No, I'm, I'm floored this whole thing is even going on. I never saw somebody fight over a landfill before. Most people try not to be involved.
It's a transfer station.
Well, it's still, it's still a landfill.
Used to be called landfill.
Hey, listen, when I got on the Board of Health, it was a dump.
But you cleaned it up.
And then I left, and now I look at it.
So, yeah, I've, I'd love to go to the meeting, too, but we can't have three people there. Unless we have a joint meeting, maybe we bring the meeting to them.
They're having one, we just need to go to it.
You want to post a board assignment?
They're having one, we just need to go to it.
Three of us, we're.
Yeah, I know. Be more than happy to.
Why don't you? If we can't bring Mohammed to the mountain.
Well, the fact that they.
Well, they're going to, no.
Don't want.
Well, are they going into executive session?
Well, if they go into the executive session.
Then we have to leave, so.
Right.
Well, I mean, if they can't come to us, and it's legitimate they can't find the time to meet, then let's go to them, because we've got to solve this. If they just don't want to come to us, then we're going to have to go to them, because we've got to settle it.
Yeah.
Still can't believe I'm involved in that transfer station still.
Can run, but you can't hide, Charlie.
Well, if it was a burden dump, I could understand why they gave it to me, but now... Heather, would you please post that for the Select Board? So we're meeting the 27th as the Select Board?
Next Tuesday.
And we're meeting on the 28th as the Select Board with the Board of Health.
28th is with the Board of Health, if we get it?
Sorry, yes. The 27th is us, 28th is with them.
What, what time?
Six.
Six. Well, this is a well-rounded week. I got the 29th with USDA to discuss grants for towns. And then we have a meeting at 11 o'clock on Friday on flammable liquids.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be second floor meeting.
Second floor?
Yeah. For the, well, that's the 30th. Yeah, no, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right. Disregard what I said.
Already done.
All right, that's the Board of Health update.
Moving on.
Now, cable TV contracts. Time Warner merged with Charter, and so they immediately jumped into our contracts and started changing things. We were looking at $50,000 seed money at the very beginning of our contract, and then another $50,000 in five years. They're trying to change the contract to say that we have to petition them and renegotiate basically in five years. I'm going to be having a conference call tomorrow to explain that in five years, we don't know who's going to be on the board or anything like that, and we don't think it's fair to expect a small town to keep these calendars or something like this.
But if it's in the original contract, if they petition us, that's fine, but we don't have to accept it.
The original contract is a draft. We are in negotiations. The original contract that we set up with Charter before they merged, Warner said this. Now Time Warner's changing it. We haven't signed the contract.
Changing the draft.
That's right.
Okay.
When was the draft made?
We negotiate it. Pardon?
Do you know when the draft?
Six months ago we started. I've been working on this off and on, and the reality of it is, it, this is one of those contracts that takes time, you know? The other part to it has to do with law changes. There's a bill that's floating around to take and require all new contracts with cable companies to provide high-definition television to the communities. So I'm going to try to get that included in the contract, that if the law changes, that we're retroactive to that, and we can move forward and keep that. If we sign the contract as is, we wouldn't get that until we re-sign it in 10 years. So just to be aware, that's where that's at. Now, on a side note, the cable broadcast system is putting together a video for Community Preservation on the work they've done and the accomplishments with Community Preservation money in town. That struck up a conversation with myself and the director of the company about the possibility of putting a satellite studio in the old town hall.
Old town hall, okay.
We're not using the upstairs of that building anyways. There might be some CPA money, there might be some cable money, and we could basically refurbish that building and get it active. Having a studio in there is not a very intrusive operation. So that's a conversation at this point, but be aware that is a conversation. So the first thing they would need to do is funding for feasibility study. But that's that with that.
Now, I made a question, and building inspector would know, but if we put something in there, does that mean we're going to trip into upgrading the building codes, depending on what we do to it, so we want to be careful on that?
I think we will be upgrading some of it on the second floor.
Yeah.
I don't think we're looking at elevators and stuff, because we isolate the police department from there. But it may give us money to fix the front of the building, deal with the steps, everything else, tighten up the building. If we get our green community grants, then we'll be having some funding to take and help with insulation and that, the AC system.
Yeah, I just want to make sure Tom was in on the beginning of it, so.
Well, this is just at this point a conversation.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
You know? So that's about it for where I'm at with those things. You've seen the correspondence on the East Street Bridge, and the fact that there might be some federal money available, that's being explored. But at this point, that's early. That's all I have.
John, answer to your question. Currently, yes, he does have a key.
Either that, or he has a bolt cutter.
It's a big key.
Yes. All right. There's no reports in departments or boards tonight. So now we have continuing business. Request to use community space for creative writing group class. Is there anyone here to speak on that?
Yes, thank you.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Delozier. I live at 8 Pine Street in East Hampton, and I'm currently starting a creative writing group for teenage girls at the East Hampton Community Center in East Hampton, and I'm looking for a space in Southampton to also have a writing group here. I do some writing tutoring at the library, and it is for profit, and there's not really a problem with that, because it's for one student. But at the library, if you do something for profit, they can't guarantee you a space, say, large enough for six to eight participants to be there. So I'm looking at the town hall as a possibility. I know that it's not usual for the town hall to accommodate people who want to do something for profit, but I thought I'd come anyway and present my case, and I'd be glad to answer questions about that. I also have handouts, but I apologize I didn't get to ahead of time. Can I give them to you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just some information about myself. I am a creative writer. I've written since I was about 10. A short story that goes with that is I have three brothers I grew up with, and I used to keep in my journal one which was nicest to me each day. At the end of the month, I would tally it up, and I'd give myself a reward for being so dedicated for doing that. They got nothing. So I think that's when I started my own creative writing. As a teenager, I participated in sports, and also realized that some teenagers don't do that kind of activity, and also need some kind of other outlet for self-expression, and that's something that has stayed with me since many years ago when I was a teenager. The group I'm doing in East Hampton, I specified it for teenage girls, because I feel there's a bit more of a need for girls to get into a safe environment to express themselves, and I figured a creative writing group might be a way for them to do that.
Is this intended for Southampton residents, or anybody?
Anybody. I really would like to, I've done a lot of outreach in the schools, libraries in West Hampton, Southampton, East Hampton, and North Hampton, and I'd really like to reach out to Hampshire Regional students, and it could be for anyone. I also have an agreement to do a group with Adoption Journeys, who is a service-based organization in North Hampton that services adoptive families, and I would do a group for, a co-ed group, actually, for teenagers that are adopted.
Have you asked the school department about providing space?
I have a letter in and a flyer in. I'm going to make a follow-up call. I haven't heard anything back.
The reason I say that is because a lot of schools take in sponsored camps and stuff, and they are for profit. So I thought that would be maybe a better setting for this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because I don't know what times you do it, but they do a lot of the activities right after school ends, too.
And the students would be there.
Mm-hmm.
That would eliminate a problem of transportation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
I can certainly follow up with them.
May I suggest that we wait and see what she gets for response from the schools before we do anything?
Yeah, I guess I have a concern. I have a, a for-profit business in the town hall, the liability and all that involved, and it's going to start, I mean, if we had the old town hall where we had some rooms available and all that, I'd, I think it'd be a great idea. We could rent, rent out space, but right now, I'd be concerned with the insurance liability.
If I offered it for free, would it make a difference in terms of having it here? I'm just starting out, so that's a possibility I'm looking at, is doing that.
The real concern here is, aside from what John just said, is also the scheduling problems of having a room.
Yes.
I mean, you just saw us read, adjust three different schedule items that we didn't even anticipate, and that's why we need the rooms for those meetings.
Yes.
The Norris School, check with them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the Norris School would be the first. That would be my first stop, the stop at the Norris.
Try.
Get classrooms. We can do it if you can deliver.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Tammy would know.
Any other questions for me? I'll do that outreach and, can I get back to you via letter? Will that work, or email, just to let you know where I am?
Sure.
Email Heather is easiest.
Okay, I can do that. Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have policies placed on file, action to be taken by recycling. That's holding until, are we all set with that?
No, we had, placed that on file on August 30th. We have, we didn't have a meeting that was after a period of time after that.
All right. Is there some action we need to do with this?
Yes, you need to approve it. So this is, this is the policy you guys have been improving for the past couple of years. It was originally adopted in either the 80s or 90s.
Yes.
It is one of those policies that ties to us being able to get grant funding for the recycling component. That's relative to the transfer station.
So it was in March of 1998. Do we just want to update this with the current date and re-accept it?
That's, that's what we've done in the past. It's totally up to the board if they want to amend, take time into it, whatever the board wishes to do, but it has at least been placed on file at this point for the period of time.
Is that in the Dropbox?
It's pretty basic.
I'm sorry, is that in the Dropbox?
Yeah, I remember reading it. It just escaped me there for a few minutes.
On August 30th it was. I don't know if it's been since.
So do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept it as written back in March of 10th, 1998.
Wait a second.
Has anyone reviewed it since then?
Yep.
Yeah.
We, we actually looked at it. It's just that we needed to vote on it.
What meeting was that?
We looked at them, two, three meetings ago, and we were supposed to put it on the agenda to vote for it. It's in your file, too.
Yeah, what number, what section is it in?
It's just post-consumer waste and.
Continue business.
Continued business. Number five, I don't see it here, so.
Is that on August 30th?
It was not on the Dropbox. It was there last night.
Right, I didn't see it. It's, I don't have it.
It's in the Dropbox.
From last night, from 8:30, right?
I've got it on today.
Oh.
It's on today's?
I just pulled it up. It's right after here. It's right here. Look at the sections. Continued business, third, page 50. That's because there's a lot of pages in there.
We meet again next week. If the board wishes, we can move this till then, and I'll make sure everyone has a hard copy.
Why don't you give them a minute to read it, and then we can, we can dispense of it, hopefully?
That would be nice.
Do you have a turn?
No, but I remember reading it, and I'm sure I have it in here.
Do you care?
No, I read it. I'm just wanting to. I remember, because back then, I was involved in creating it. See that? I've just flipped it over on a page, you know?
Yeah, I'm good with this.
Okay, yeah. I remember it, yep. I'm in favor.
We got a second? A discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye's got it. It passes. All right, personnel policy, short-term disability, 26-week provision, continued from prior meeting. Is there something new with this?
Well, the board had asked me previously, remember, for the last meeting, to compile by requesting from other communities what they do for policies and if they have anything that's even similar. So what we actually did was we requested from other communities if anyone uses it. We inquired about it and all that information's been in folks' packet. And should have the breakdown. So essentially, what we were able to find is short-term disability policies. The only places we could find with them were Southampton, Beckett, and Harvard. They also town insure for long-term disability. And then from there, you actually have attachments in your packet next to that that actually goes into the details of each of those policies. Because this was something the board, again, wished to review further.
It also says here, Long Meadow has 100% employee-paid STD and LT policies?
Short-term disability and long-term disability.
Well, I knew that, but I was just saying that.
Well, just clarifying for people at home, because...
Oh. Long Meadow offers it but doesn't pay for it. It's all employee deduction from the payroll.
Mm-hmm.
So you're saying we're unique by providing this?
Uh, yeah, so Southampton, Beckett, and Harvard, if you move over on the, the coverage chart here, for Beckett, it's a six-month coverage. And it looks like it only covers 60% of the salary that's covered. And there's a waiting period of seven days and it covers 13 weeks in a 12-month period. And then Harvard has a version, but that one's even more confusing, confusion, confusing because it looks like they also use an insurance company as well.
Way, it has Wayland here. I'm not sure what Wayland is, but it says that they don't...
They just have a sick bank.
Pardon?
It looks like they have a sick bank according to the chart.
Right. They don't offer STD, but they have a sick bank where employees can accrue sick time. And then a long-term LTD is offered after that, which, which makes sense. It's a combination.
So I guess the best thing to do is to hold this until town meeting and see if allocations of funding are approved. Shannon?
Yeah.
I mean, realistically, unless there's funding approved.
Exactly.
There's only three.
I mean, accrual of sick time up to a certain point and then having the employee buy STD or LTD is something I'm familiar with, you know, but it does give you a nice bank there. And employees who don't take it every, every time they get it, then they have a bank, employees that don't. And they have an issue with long-term illness.
Well, this is the information the board wanted. You have the information now.
Yep.
We're still waiting on town meeting for funding, so. Unless there's more discussion with this, I'd like to just move forward.
I'm okay with that.
We have here a notation on sick leave. That's the same thing, no, basically. So.
Yes, same thing.
You ready to go into new business?
Mm-hmm.
All right, new business. I find this kind of interesting. The Veterans Grave Officer, requested by a Veterans Grave Officer to have the Highway Department install a 30-foot aluminum flag pole at the town hall between the Revolutionary and Civil War monuments. Funding was secured back in 2012 to purchase the pole and reimburse the Highway for wages, expenses for installing this. And that also includes a light on the, what do you call it, the gazebo to shine on the flag. Evidently, the funding got approved. It's there. And it just never went anywhere. And now the Veterans Representative for this wants us to put this forward. So Heather, the way I'm reading this, the money's funded and everything else, all we have to do is cut a PO.
2012 prices.
Yeah.
The, the only, the reason it's before the select board is because it actually has a modification to town grounds and because the board oversees the town property. In order for Mr. Ferry to move forward on this, we actually need permission from the Board of Selectmen as keepers of the two-town college highway to be able to move forward.
Do I hear a motion to let Mr. Ferry put a spade shovel in the ground?
Well, I've got some questions, but I'll, I'll make the motion for, for the discussion part.
Second it.
Discussion?
Well, we don't want to put a spade shovel in the ground. We want to have it installed properly with concrete and all. And then the second question is, who is going to maintain the flag every day?
Will we?
Pardon?
If you light it, you don't have to take it down every day.
Okay, so.
It just stays there.
Okay.
Mr. Ferry also said to me that he wants to basically buy four extra flags to keep in storage with this, which seems reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Because one of the problems with this, and he gave one great details with this to me about the fact that the flag size is dictated by the size of the pole.
Mm-hmm.
Really?
You don't just go buy a flag and put it on the pole. The size of the pole dictates the size of the flag.
Not, not specs that I'm aware, but I'll go with...
I wasn't about to argue with him.
I think that sounds like a reasonable...
Yeah, we just want it installed properly so it's secure and all that.
There's a motion on the flag.
Do I hear a motion?
There is a motion.
There is a motion and there's a second.
Do I hear?
All in favor?
Favor?
Aye.
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 So moved.
Now the part we've been waiting for.
Now the part. Mr. Pel...
That's you.
Finally.
So I, I just want to close up on some old business and then move on to a little bit new business. I had three items on the...
Mr. Pellegrini, first thing, like always, name.
And Pellegrini, Crooked Edge Road.
Thank you.
So I'd like to close up on a little old business and then bring some new business to the table. The old business was, you know, setting the foundation here, just reminding everyone, back in May, I drove by the church and I noticed
Oh, that's right.
the town department filling in potholes. And I asked Randall why they were working on private property and he indicated because that's the way it's always been done and bringing it up with the select board. So since then, I, I've done a little bit more investigation and found out that we've actually been doing more than just the church property. We've been plowing Bissonnet Circle, Cottage Ave. And now through the acquisition of the new construction group meeting notes, I found out Helen Drive is not a legal road either.
Really?
Apparently, it wasn't recorded properly and it is not a legal road. The title examiner let the town know that. So now, and the reason why I have this concern again is personal reasons because my property was almost dubbed undevelopable because the maintenance of Crooked Edge Road isn't done. So my problem as a citizen who's paying full taxes, why are we using town resources on private property? So the board asked to pull back and, and find those answers. So really, I'd like to understand who authorizes this.
The best I can find, and I'm not saying I'm correct, but the best I can find is this seems, practice seemed to start back in the days when John Garska was the Highway Superintendent. And it became a practice of the town to take and deal with these, quote, "private roads" because they didn't, they weren't viewed as private roads back then. They were assumed that they were just public ways. It hasn't been until the time that we actually started looking at records and documenting records, like Helen Drive, that people have become aware of the fact that they're not actually owned by the town. The problem now is, we have established this as a practice. We don't want to add more to that. And I haven't found a gracious way of stepping away from it, and I'm open to that.
How about this? How about we just send a bill to everyone on Bissonnet Circle that lives there?
Well, you know what's funny with that was, I, we had, didn't we just accept that as one of our town roads to plow and to maintain was Bissonnet Circle? I was opposed to that because they, I believe, pay some sort of an association fee to have that road maintained. So they're all paying to have that road maintained, yet we, as the townspeople, are now paying to plow it.
Now Shannon, a little bit on that. The association is to maintain the drainage areas and the pro common areas. Second of that, one thing that I think is a misconception of people when they, of townspeople when they go against the adoption of these roads. Every foot of public road that we have, we get Chapter 90 funds. So as I'm building this road up on Crooked Edge Road, Randall should not have to, this town should have not, should not have to touch that for 20 years, other than to plow it. And they should get money from the Chapter 90 for every foot of that road. So at the end of the day, that road, by it laying there and built properly, will pay for itself on the maintenance. And so that's the misconception I think a lot of town people have. And, you know, when I first started talking with Ed Colley when he was here, he was for development because every foot of good road that was built in town was an extra dollar every year that's coming into the Chapter 90 funds. And as you've noticed, at the beginning of this year, we had over $900,000 in our Chapter 90. 475 of that, I believe, has been sitting there for two years unused. 320-some thousand of that was sitting there for two years unused. So the, the question comes back to, it's not a question of money around here. It's a question of time to apply for the state grants and get the money and put the, the roads together. So, you know, either way, I'm fine with it if the town votes not to pick up a road. But what I'm not fine with is a 3,200-foot driveway that I have with five houses on it that we all pay $75 each every snowstorm to plow it. And there's many times I've been out there plowing, sliding with my truck, and the city drives by and I'm just, oh, please come and plow this. And they won't. So again, it's favoritism. And I think, you know, as his town is in a budget crisis, like we say we are and we don't have enough money, it's time to tighten the belt. And my understanding is there was a contractor that developed Bissonnet Circle. Why hasn't he sent the bill and let him deal with it, collecting it from everyone else? What about Cottage Ave? What, you know, what's the deal with the church? Why are we maintaining the church? And I don't want to seem like, you know, some sort of atheist out there, but at the...
Discuss that right, is there?
There isn't. But, but at the end of the day, and, and I've heard many stories that it was because of an agreement that they would never develop the back lot. Well, they should transfer ownership to the town if that's the case. And, and then if there is another deal that's put out there to maintain their driveway, we can do that. And by the way, I've also done some research. And you do, as a board, have a legal right to petition to plow private roads. There's a process for that. And you guys can do that. So i- if you see fit, that you don't want to cut these people off because they've had it for a long time, I strongly suggest we do a due, due process and vet it out properly and, and get it done right if that's really the, the manner of the road or the wish of the board and the town.
So who owns the roads, Charlie? We're discussing Helen Way, et cetera, et cetera.
Those are roads that I, if my understanding is correct, they were never accepted by the town.
Right.
So basically, the property lines on each one of these houses goes right to the center of the road.
And they weren't accepted because they didn't meet our standards?
No, they, some of these were never accepted because of the fact that there were no standards back then.
So we should either do, do process to accept them or go back and say, hey, they're not our roads. I mean, we should, we should finalize it.
We should do something. We shouldn't sit in the middle here.
Right.
But if you take, for instance, Cottage Ave, one side is Westfield, one side is Southampton.
Yeah.
Okay? It's basically a long dirt driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
And some of it's paved now. But who's to say who really owns it?
I think we should find out.
The people own it. It's a private way.
If the people own it...
So they own it. It's their responsibility, no different than coming up to Crooked Edge Road and seeing money.
So should we plow it or should we let them take care of it? And do we have a method, if we plow it, to bill them back? I mean, just ideas, you know?
I don't think we have a method to bill them back, that we have a mechanism to collect. Heather, we had Randall put some material together?
We, we've, we've had this conversation before, Charlie. We actually had this conversation about plowing last year when we had the whole subdivision actually in this, this room. We've had the conversation previously before that. We have looked into adopting the legislation or the MGLs that would allow us to continue to do private roads and plow, as Mr. Pellegrini has suggested. But every time it's come before the board, it's, it's kept on going. So whatever the board wishes to do, we can bring it back up. We can grab the research, bring it back before the select board, whatever the board wants.
How do we take over those roads?
We have to go through the process. I think it's just, you know, the private roads, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Pellegrini's done research more recently than I've seen it, but I believe it's an adoption of master and a law.
Yeah, that's got to be voted on.
To do so.
Mr. Pellegrini, can you forward that to us?
Well, I'll talk my...
Attorney?
Attorney over here.
I have bandwidth to burden myself with that. It's not something I've stated or printed or anything, and it's really my whole responsibility.
No, I just...
And I, I guess, I guess I...
I'd be forthcoming, but I don't.
Thank you, Heather. I, I guess I would do that if I can petition my 3,200-foot road with five houses on it to be one of these that are picked up and maintained going forward by the town.
You could certainly ask.
So then why don't you?
Perfect. Perfect.
I don't have the bandwidth to look into this.
Yeah, exactly.
We, we're sorry, you made a decision. You're going to be with it now.
So, you know, again, and, and that has been a burden that are, the five people who live on my driveway have paid for it for years. And I just don't see it as fair. So I think it should be uniform. And if there is going to be this of taking private drives, there actually needs to be a look at other drives around town because this cannot be just because of the way it was. Because if we did things just the way it was, I'd have blasted that subdivision in there and thrown a half an inch of pavement on it and walked away.
And that's the problem. We're going through a transitional period with a lot of this stuff. I mean, even the curb cuts. That's an evolutionary problem. And we're trying to be open. We're trying to make this work. And it takes time.
We can't sit on the fence, but Heather has something.
Chapter 40, Section 6C. A severe town which accepts this section in the manner provided in the next one may appropriate money for the removal of snow and ice from such private ways within its limits and open to the public use as may be designated by the selectmen, provided that for the purposes of Section 25 of Chapter 84, the removal of snow or ice from such a way shall not constitute a repair of a way.
Okay, so if we just do that, we're going to plow snow. And if there's any repairs that are needed, it's up to them to take care of.
Well, it's just trying to delineate the two differences so that we're not assuming the repairs are private roads. You're just saying that you'll do the snow removal plow. This is one of these, if I recall correctly, we actually had this conversation quite a bit and I believe Town Council was involved at one point as well. Because the concern was, if this isn't accepted, and I think Randall did do his job and bring this to the board, whichever board it may have been at the time's attention, that we were plowing roads that we legally could plow, but should be adopting this to do so.
So I would adopt that. Can we put it on the agenda?
For a town meeting? It would be a town meeting warrant acceptance of an MGL.
Can we get it on for this town meeting?
John, I can do whatever you want.
Then put it on.
Make it so.
How, how do I get my road listed on there?
Well, if, if she puts the adoption of that, which gives the Board of Selectmen the authority, then the Board of Selectmen, if I'm reading this right, even though I don't have it to read, would be...
Then we can make that decision.
We'd be making that decision.
Excellent. No, I think that's fair. I guess the only loose chat, since we're in election season here, would be you can't repair the potholes on the church. So what are we going to do about maintaining that way? Because according to what Heather just read there, it doesn't sound like you can maintain. It's just a provision to remove snow and ice.
It appears to me we cannot go out on, on the church property and start patching the sidewalk or the driveway or whatever.
I, I would relay that to Randall. If there's some backstory that we don't know, then we can get it, but otherwise, you know.
Do I hear that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, right.
How do you think I feel, John, up here? Exactly.
This is...
It's the separation of church and state. It's how our...
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I understand.
I'm just not making the first motion.
All right.
I'll make the motion. If it needs to be done, it needs to be done.
Okay.
What's the motion?
Whatever you said. To let Randall know that he's not to maintain those grounds.
Yeah, on private property.
Make a motion that the Highway Department is not to maintain the roadways, driveways around the church.
Well, can we...
Or plow.
You got to give the reason why.
Can we do it in a more broad span, any private?
Because that's really what it is.
Yeah, let's not pick on it.
No, because of the fact that we are going in front of town meeting for private roads.
We're talking about repairing. We're talking about repairing.
Maintaining and repairing.
It's maintaining, and it's private roads.
So it's okay to plow the church property?
It's okay to plow, but not to maintain.
If we're going to bring this up, and we're going to have this discussion, we're going to have this discussion.
Can we start by getting a list of how many private roads are there in town? What are we talking about?
We're talking about quite a few.
I'd like to see a list, because that will probably be asked at town meeting, and we're not going to know.
So hold on, she has more to add.
So the next section, the one that says how to do this, I just pulled it up. So Section 6C shall be submitted for acceptance to the registered voters of our city, or, let me get to the town piece, in the town, an annual town election, election, you know that key word? Upon petition of 200 registered voters or of 20% of the total number of registered voters substantially in the form of the following question, which shall be placed on the official ballot used for the election of officers at such city or town election. So this would be annual town meeting, now we're talking. Shall the town vote to accept the provisions of Section 6C of Chapter 40 of the general laws which authorize cities and towns to appropriate money for the removal of snow and ice from private ways therein open to public use? There's a box that says yes and no. If a majority of the votes in answer to said question is in the affirmative, then said section shall thereupon take full effect in such city or town, but not otherwise. So I stand corrected, it's not as simple as accepting an MGL, it rather requires an election at town meeting.
How many registered voters do we have, roughly?
About 4,000, give or take.
So 20%, so, or 200, right?
If you go by petition.
But it doesn't look like, I don't know, Charlie, we'd have to look into, I don't know if this is one of those ones that the board can simply put on, or if it has to be required to be submitted through petition.
I mean, the first thing that I'm hearing is, we got to wait till town meeting, to annual town meeting. So that kills the whole October thing right off the bat.
And I can always verify with Town Council on, I'm sure they've dealt with this.
Are we sure we never adopted this in the past?
No.
So then we should research that, because there seems to be a clause to a clause to a clause.
Especially with winter coming up.
Well, then, would you contact the acting town clerk and ask her to see if she can find out if we did adopt that? I suspect not.
I don't think so.
Yeah, but we should check.
We've looked in this before.
Yeah.
So with that said, we're running into plowing season here. What are we going to do? Are we going to continue forward and give extra benefits to certain residents in this town? Or are we going to send them the hard letter that they need to get, which is, you've got to pay your fair share?
I think we need to do a little more research on it.
What?
We should do more research on it, in a timely fashion, to at least get more information.
Correct, because I'd hate to let it, as my friend here said, sweep it under the carpet until the end of next year.
I think the first thing we've got to do is just verify that we never approved it. The second thing I'd like to see is a list of private roads.
All the private ways.
I did, about a year ago, go with Randall around, and there was quite a few streets, like Wallace Road comes to mind. Helen Drive didn't, but...
That was just recently found. I'll give you the background.
Yeah, that's probably just an error in the recording.
It was. It was actually accepted by town, and it's an error, so it's illegal loophole, which obviously we could probably get around that one, but some of the other ones that obviously are not going to get picked up, like Cottage Ave, I don't see how it would ever get picked up.
Have you ever seen Wallace Road?
Yeah, well, we're plowing right now, Bistonet.
Yeah.
But then there's also off Gilbert, there's a Gilbert private way, private, that's a private road, but they allow it themselves, I believe.
I don't know.
So we've got to find out where we draw the line in the sand here, who gets plowed, who doesn't, I guess, so. But I'd like to see a list first of all the ones known, and then just verify that we didn't accept this.
Heather, could you put a list together? I know it exists, I know Randall's already provided, so it's someplace. And a copy to general law?
Our master and laws printing out as we speak, from the Xerox printer, so I can get that to you tomorrow or before you leave. As far as the list of streets, I do not have one. I can see if Randall or the town clerk currently has it at their fingertips.
Well, I don't need the second, but I know Randall had it, because we went around discussing this about a year ago, trying to figure out the history of this and why it was the way it was. All right.
You could just send the general law in an email, I can just look it up online, so, yeah.
All right, next topic.
Excuse me one moment, there was a motion, I don't remember if it's been modified or ratified, but it says to notify Randall not to maintain any private, and then you guys were talking, and then you never finished the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to complete that thought?
Do you want to withdraw that motion?
It was never fully made, so I don't think it's there.
I don't think there was a second, yet.
Okay.
Did you, you were...
So we were in the process of making one, but then she started reading, and then there was more on top of more, so then that's when I said, so maybe we should do a little bit more research on that, seeing that we're not getting the full picture.
Okay.
But it needs to be done in a timely fashion.
Yes.
Getting the information.
Because I'd hate to see you just start.
Yes.
Plowing again.
So I withdraw the half motion that I made, and I would like to get more information in a very timely fashion.
Do you have the floor, sir?
Thank you. So I was, despite multiple requests for the meeting minutes of this new construction group, I was able to sustain them, at least a certain amount of them, and I've got some pretty big concerns, and what I'd like to do is, you take one and pass that down. Here, same as this, take one and pass it down. So the best I know that there has been three meetings. There may be more. Heather should be able to answer any of the questions that are outstanding, because I know she's been at all the meetings. But just looking at this, and I know you guys haven't seen these, so...
They actually have, they get a copy.
Do they? Okay. So my first question is, why was I not sent a copy by anyone on the board or the town administrator? Is this confidential information that we should not have as citizens?
When did we get this copy, Heather?
You get them after every meeting. So this is a, just to remind the board, this is a compilation of notes that should not actually theoretically be out to the public. These are notes from different departments regarding individual specifics. This is when we get together, Mr. Pellegrini has requests on numerous occasions, I've responded to them on numerous occasions. Charlie has actually, I think, even talked to him at some point, I believe, about the open meeting law. This group does not constitute a committee, formal or otherwise, under the open meeting law. We are simply individuals. I, excuse me, thank you. Moving...
It's my time, Heather.
But I'm trying to respond to you, Mr. Pellegrini, as you have inquired.
But you've answered that.
Dan, please let her...
So moving forward on that piece, you have these group things. The reason this is not, we do not, we are not, actually, excuse me one moment, I did do my research on this. So, "Under what constitutes a public body? While there's no comprehensive list of public bodies, any multi-member board, commission committee, or subcommittee within the executive or legislative branches of government. The law includes multi-member body created to advise or make recommendations to a public body, this is not such. Also governing board of any local housing, redevelopment, et cetera." Let's see where we go to the more important piece. Individual government officials, such as a town manager, police chief, and members of their staff are not subject to the law, and so they may meet with one another to discuss public business without needing to comply with open meeting law requirements. This group, we had started meeting several months ago for the purposes of having ongoing issues with different departments where communication was not occurring. This is no different than an extension of my department head meetings. I do not post department head meetings, I do not post minutes to department head meetings, I do not notify the public, other than the fact that they know generally when they occur, what the specifics of the department head meetings are. This is no different. The reason this is listed out specifically is so we can keep track of our issues ongoing. We have multiple problems with properties where they've been condemned, we've had issues with individuals with complying with pulling permits and so forth.
Can I speak at all?
So Heather pointed out a great point there that makes this illegal. They are influencing boards. And if you go to the meetings for August 13th, and you look at curb cut driveway regulations, which would be page four of six, number nine, the last line there, what does that say? Number three, have BOS approve on August 12th.
Where are you?
The one that's crossed out that says August up here on the top.
I don't have one that says August.
Oh, yeah.
Wait a minute.
He wrote...
Oh, 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 sorry, my bad.
And then you go to page four of six, and you look at line item number 19, which is the curb cut driveway regulations, which had everyone fired up in here tonight. And if you look at point number three, that in black and white is a violation of the open meeting laws. They are influencing the board to make a decision that they vetted, and Heather is absolutely correct. She is allowed as a department head, the police chief, the fire chief, but as soon as they start inviting elected board officials, i.e. Ryan Gallagher and Paul Demon, it becomes an illegal meeting. It becomes subject to the Open Meeting Laws Act, and if you start looking through this, she's talking about department heads. You got, Randall works for you guys ultimately, he works for us. Why is he qualified to weigh in on half of the stuff here? The meeting was at 10 o'clock during the day, when he should be maintaining our highways and doing work that he's supposed to be doing, but, and he's in here weighing in on, we've got stuff about a dead body that's been in a house for too long, and now it's got mold. How is, how are these people qualified to make these decisions? And why aren't these subjects not brought up? And the reason, again, why I have a personal interest, if you look at the first few, they earmark my subdivision. Okay? And it actually talks about no water up there. When we spent a lot of money and time on the planning board over the past couple of years rewriting the subdivision bylaws, they knew there were parts of town that didn't have water, and they chose not to do anything about it. But when I bring my subdivision forward, everyone tries to stop it, including Randall, who wrote a scathing letter, which I sent to you guys, that was out of his bounds, was way out of bounds, actually recommending that they deny the subdivision because of the maintenance and the construction of Crookville Edge Road, then it gets back on here. So my question is, who brought my subdivision, which was legally approved and by every subdivision bylaw, up here? And then, if you notice, in the middle meeting, it was closed with no actions, and then the third meeting, they opened it back up when John Workman came in and Paul Demon came in to discuss fire cisterns. And then John Workman, who from this meeting went to the planning board last week, or the week before, and brought forward a fire cistern initiative, which is directly off of this, so again, there is another pointed case of where this group, this group is influencing elected boards and has no open agenda, has no open meeting policy, and it is up to the individuals to put whatever they want on there. The last thing I will say, well, it's not the last thing, but another point I want to make is, when this was first brought up at the meeting two weeks ago, you guys were surprised at this group. Clearly, none of you knew about it. Is that acceptable? As the representatives of the voting public to not be aware of what is going on in the town and these, what these people are doing?
Well, I mean, to Heather's point, they're treating them as department head meetings, and to your point saying, why would he weigh in with a dead body in there? I mean, I go to department head meetings all the time, and I have a lot of different areas, and people bring up things that the person next to them may not be interested, but it's around the table, what's going on, you know? So from her point of view, I can see that. Whether it violated the open meeting law, that's a question, I don't have the answer to, to be honest with you. But I can see where there's people just talking about what's going on in their areas and what they want to...
Absolutely, I understand, you've got to have an open, close communication, that's how you run it. But as a town administrator, there's enough questions that this may be a violation of the open meetings law. Wouldn't you expect that extra step to be taken to at least reach out to the Ethics Committee, reach out to our legal counsel to see if this is right, to follow a procedure? If we're truly trying to solve a problem to better this town, why aren't we doing that? And then the other thing, you know, bring up here...
Can we pause just on that for a minute? I hear what you're saying, and I have no problem if the board wishes to instruct Heather to have Town Council review this and see if we violated the open meeting law. I suspect not, but now that you've raised the question, I have no problem with asking the question. Does the board feel that that would be something to do?
And I'm fine, but to answer your question, why she didn't reach out is because she didn't feel it was a violation. So if you don't feel it's a violation, you're not going to reach out. But now that it's brought up, it's, you know, it's not a...
Okay. And then the last meeting I mentioned of revolving funds, and, you know, you said it was a good idea, but maybe my approach was wrong. If you notice Larry Smith is on here. Larry Smith doesn't work for free. And I'll ask Heather, Heather, where did the money come from to pay for Larry Smith's time to make the recommendations on the driveway curb cut?
I cannot answer that question, I do not know.
Okay. I heard it came out of the revolving fund of the planning board. So I question the legality that the planning board can reach into their revolving fund and pay a consultant on a subject that is not related to their purview.
Stop there.
Okay, pause.
So I can make this work. Is the board wish to take and instruct Heather to find out how this was paid for?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, while we're talking to legal, all valid questions, let's find out.
Yeah.
And my ask of the board is this. Again, you know, we all have livelihoods, we all have families, I'm not looking to get anyone pinched, I'm just looking to get people educated and do the right thing for the town. That's what we're looking for here. And you know what? Laws are for everyone, they're not for certain individuals, and that's all I ask, is if we pass laws, they go across the board. So my ask on this is, there's enough question, and if we read the mass general law of open meetings, and I'm sure there's other people in this room that can weigh in on some of the other points when you read through these that are questionable, I'd ask that this board send a note to this group and ask them to cease and assist in anything that they're doing until you get legal counsel. And then second of that, any output, the fire cistern, the...
Let's start with the first one.
Okay.
Not trying to be rude to you, but if we don't do it this way, it's going to get lost in the shuffle.
Thank you.
Does the board wish to issue a notice to the department heads not to meet until we have legal opinion?
Is this a regular meeting, Heather, that you've got scheduled?
First Wednesday, the morning.
First Wednesday.
I'll have a decision, or from Town Council in the morning.
So I mean, I will go along with not having a meeting until we have, or...
A response from Town Council?
It's getting late here, huh? We have a reply from General Counsel, and it sounds like it'll be done before then anyways, but if not, don't have, don't have that meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I just add a comment on that? Heather Pellegrini, some of the six Crookville Edge roads...
Board's voting right now, you have to wait until they get done with their voting.[1657.88] You have to wait until they get done with their voting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, I suppose. We're just going to wait for town council to make a decision.
That's all.
Yeah, that's all.
Sure.
From what I've seen, it seems the key point is, the department heads, of course, are allowed to meet, that's their job, of course. But when they start pulling in other members from elected boards, that's when the actual violation of the open meeting law occurs.
Your point is taken.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that wasn't missed.
And you can see by the action of the board that we're actually looking at legal counsel to sort this out.
Yep.
I'm just trying to do it in steps, because when someone goes to the podium and barrages somebody, you lose things.
For sure.
And then you'll be back here again.
Right. I just want to point out one thing. I mean, you read to us that at the end of this curb cut bylaw or rule that we're going to pass...
Meeting notes.
Yeah, to have the board of selectmen approve on August 12th. That doesn't affect my opinion on this board. When that regulation hit here, we look at it, we discuss it, and we, you know, look for input from the public. So because this meeting recommended it, it's not a rubber stamp for me.
No, absolutely. And great point, Jim, I was not indicating that that was a rubber stamp for you, but it just shows that the intent was to take the output of this meeting and influence and try to push the boards to a decision. And then the other concern I have is...
Hold on, before you keep going. I don't, I understand exactly where you're coming from. And I'm going to say, in Heather's defense, which I usually don't, this looks like her notes on what she's going to do. So they've had this and then they're going to bring it to the board for approval. Doesn't necessarily mean the board is going to approve anything she brings to us.
Absolutely, but it shows them an influence. They should not even be reaching out...
That does not influence...
I don't think it influences, absolutely not.
This is just a department saying, we want to bring this to the board for their consideration.
It was probably reworded.
It was poorly worded, is what it's going to be.
Okay.
That's what I...
That is perfectly fine. And then I also want, there's another thing in here, if you notice in the last one, about ticketing. Noncriminal ticketing. So I guess what I'm concerned about is we have these discussions and there's output that actually affect the citizens. And now, not only is that closed doored, very hard to find anything out about, they're actually bringing something forward to initiate a ticketing fine system to the public. So it's very concerning with the way this appears on the surface. Coming in and setting bylaws...
Well, Dan, I can tell you, the noncriminal ticketing, I'm the one that started that in motion. And I started it in motion because of the fact that a number of our departments, police included, are sort of handstrung on a number of ways they can deal with problems. And noncriminal ticketing is a much softer approach when you need to penalize somebody.
And that makes sense. I'll just say, when you see it come out of a board that no one knows, or a group that no one knows about, and it's on there and you see no rhyme or reason to the things that are on there, and the name of the group is new construction group, and half of the things on here have nothing to do with construction, it just really does not give the right impression to the townspeople.
So maybe the title of the board, but to me, that's all good brainstorming and that's, it brings it up to us here. We talked about the civil ticketing. It was a great idea and, you know, it helps the residents if they get stopped, doesn't go on their record. So, I mean, that's how you get good ideas. I mean, we're an elected board, so we need people pushing out.
Absolutely. You vet these in public.
Well, we did. They were brought up to us.
Ten AM in the room over there...
But if that's a department head meeting, and again, we're going to check the open meeting law, but if that's just a department head meeting discussing ideas, should we bring this up to the board or should we not?
Why board members?
I don't know. But I mean, you invite guests as you need them.
And then the other concerning thing is actually to call out the subdivision that I'm putting in for no reason. Why?
I don't know what the reason was. I wasn't there, but yeah, I hear you on that one.
And so it really, as a citizen, just put yourself in my shoes. This backroom meeting, the first, one of the first six items is on a subdivision that's legally going in, then it comes off as closed and goes back on as open.
But you know, just reading this, they're actually mentioning addresses here that are problem properties.
Absolutely.
It's not your property, but the point is, is they're mentioning other areas that they are having concerns with as department heads, and they have unilateral concerns on these properties.
But if I'm following all the rules of a newly created subdivision bylaw that was just done last year, how could there be any concern other than we don't want development and we're going to try to stop development?
Well, I can understand that that's your perception of this, but I must be candid with you. I'm reading this and it looks to me like this is Heather's crib notes, so she knows how she needs to advise the board of the discussions that are going on. That doesn't mean that the board's taking action or direction on those. And I mean, some of the stuff that I'm reading, you know, like house and foreclosure, you know, yes, curb cut driveways, and I got trenching permits, then I got another house with a problem. And noncriminal ticketing, I could tell you right now, it's got the highway superintendent, the building inspector, the water department, the fire department, and the board of health, all of which would benefit with noncriminal ticketing.
And I'm perfectly fine with that. We should have these meetings in open. The agenda should be out in the open. That's all I'm saying. As soon as we bring boards in and we start pushing agendas that aren't in the public, it's concerning. And then if you look at, and I understand, those are problem houses that have nothing to do with new construction, so maybe the names should change. But if you look at things on the subdivision that Pellegrini Estates that we're doing up there, they're talking about water in a non-area, but looking to pin it on the subdivision. So if it's a big concern in fire protection and safety in areas of town that don't have water, why is the select board not bringing a warrant forward to ask for more taxes to go put fire cisterns around town so the fire chief could have it? Why are we looking to burn in a subdivision for just that subdivision? Because by the way, if that is put on the subdivision, it is for those houses. It doesn't solve the problem for the other eighty houses up on Crooked Ledge. So again, if we're really in the right frame of mind and trying to solve problems for the town, we should be bringing solutions forward that encompass much more than just the new construction.
But these department heads are brainstorming approaches on things. Yes, I see that you're singled out in this discussion in that area. I appreciate that. On the other hand, a lot of these discussions that people are singled out with blossom into being bigger problems in town that are not recognized until the entity becomes available to itself, and that's why that discussion's happening. I'm not defending them. I'm just basically saying that we, as a board, don't hear anything until the department head or the citizens come to us to say, hey, we think we got a problem.
Perfect. Understanding, and again, that's what I was doing, was informing.
Heather has something.
Answer, it's not a violation of the open meeting law for this group. Just checked with town council, got a response back.
I suspected.
Can I say something?
Name, rank, serial number?
Blood type.
That's what I feel like every time.
El Santoro, eighty-three Pleasant Street. My understanding is the open meeting law, and I'm not an attorney, but the AG is perfectly willing to come here and take a look at this. They don't think it's a bother, they don't mind to come and look at it, so we know that we're doing it right. But if there's a deliberation going on about regulations that have consequences, such as driveway, driveway modifications, curb cuts, they have, not only for somebody like Dan doing a development, but for me, maybe I want to put an extra two parking places because I want to be able to move around in my drive if I have people in my pool. So then those become something I have to live with. Those things are deliberations. I don't care if you call them your working group, whatever you call them. If there's a deliberation that impacts the people of this town, they have to be open meetings. And if we, you know, if we're saying, I'm not satisfied with that answer. I mean, I'll call the AG's office and I'll have them take a look at it for us. There's no crime or punishment here, but let's just do it right. Because if there's a deliberation, we have the right as citizens to hear the deliberation, why those curb cuts? Why that slope? Why are we getting these regulations? And I think having it open, when there's a deliberation, the output of which could be a regulation that impacts the citizens, it absolutely falls under open meeting law. So I'm sure of it. I think the AG's office is sure of it, but let's, I mean, if you want, let's have them take a look at it. Because I think you always have to err on the side of why not open? I mean, why not open? You know, is there some reason why it's not open?
What are you trying to hide?
Yeah, I mean, that's it. It creates that illusion.
Sorry. I think whoever we ask, be it the attorney or AG's office, we've got Heather depicting it as a regular, you know, department head meeting. We got Dan over here saying it's dark room and, you know, and locked room and ten o'clock in the morning, as, you know, and he's talking about a list of things.
Well, some of the things are not just department head meetings.
No, I'm saying, we had two different descriptions, so...
And bylaws for construction in the future.
Well, but whoever talks to the AG has to give them an unbiased opinion of what goes on.
Oh, yeah, you just give it to them and say, here's what they're doing.
I mean, Dan calls, he may get one answer. Heather calls, she may get another, because they're going to describe it differently. We just need to be fair when we describe it.
Oh, yeah, they would just look at what's been done.
Right.
But I just think, you know, to avoid, whenever there's a discussion, a deliberation about something that ultimately is going to impact the citizens, it's subject to open meeting law, no matter what you call it.
And we don't disagree. That's, we want to check it out.
That's the point.
And, you know, even further that, I did have to ask three times to see who was on the board, asked the questions of this, and absolutely got no answer. Heather said she responded to me. Her response was a link to the complaint form, or complaint. That was it. There was no meeting notes, there was not one answer to one of my questions. It was a link to, here's the complaint form, have at it. And then I had no knowledge of who was on the board, what was discussed, I didn't know if there was a violation. But then, once I get my hands on these and start looking at that, it kind of raises more questions. So, you know, it's kind of a twofold problem. One, we have the perception of issues. And two, when citizens ask, i.e. myself, ask for these answers to these questions, they're not given. And that really just creates a bigger cloud around all this.
Thank you, sir.
I have nothing more to add. Anyone else have anything to add?
I have something else.
Something else, you said? That I never mind.
This isn't open, is it?
No. It's not open.
It's not an open time for the public, but I got to tell you, I think I'm the only one that...
I just had a citizen's inquiry and I missed, I couldn't get here early.
You have a citizen's inquiry? Get up to the podium.
Tammy, Walunas, two ninety-eight College Highway. I am inquiring about the Boy Scouts doing a drive-through spaghetti dinner on Election Day. I know several years back, the Cub Scouts did it, and after we did it out in the parking lot, we got our hand slapped that we didn't go through the correct procedures. We are meeting next Tuesday, the Boy Scouts. And what we want to do is cook all the food at the church, have signs saying you can do a drive-through, you can place your order as you're leaving voting, go to the church and pick up your spaghetti dinner to go.
Stop at the board of health, get a temporary food permit.
What a good idea.
Did you put signs on?
Go to the town clerk and make sure you're not interfering with the election.
Okay.
All right. And the third thing is a question I have. I don't see anything other than us authorizing them to utilize a little bit of parking space for this.
It won't be here. We're over there.
But you're going to have signs or something here?
You're going to have something to...
Well, the kids, they're in Boy Scouts right now. They just walk over with their lanterns and be posted right here as they're leaving.
Is there the exit up here?
Yep.
Is that the exit, Charlie?
We're not taking your spaces.
Just to have a couple of...
Front exits?
Anyways.
Oh, so they're at the exit, so...
Yep, we're at the exit.
Are we authorizing them to go at the exit?
I don't think we need to, as long as they're, I mean, you know...
I think it's a good idea. I think it's cute.
It was a huge fundraiser for them. Everybody said, oh, it was great, and then afterwards we got in trouble.
What was the trouble about?
Yeah, who?
We cooked the food at another place and we brought it here and had it in the hot tins and everything.
I can understand that.
Okay.
Talk to the board of health, get a temporary permit. If you're serving the food out of an established kitchen...
Yep.
You shouldn't have an issue.
Okay.
Gloves, temperature gauge, hairnets.
Yep, and we have a Safe Service certified person over there already.
Done deal.
You shouldn't have any problems.
Thank you for letting me talk.
Okay. Oh, yeah, back again.
No, I just want to close it out. I just want to close it out and make sure we have an action item that the board is going to follow up and identify where these funds came from.
That was directed to Heather.
Yep.
And do we have an ETA or just watch when that happens and then...
I figured she'll find out in a week.
She'll know by next meeting.
And then based on that output, there could be additional actions?
Depends on the response, yeah.
And then, since we've got the word from Legal, we're doing nothing with the board at this point, or you guys are going to discuss this group, or not, this group?
Well, we just got Legal saying that we're not violating the open meeting law. If you wish to take in pursuit with the AG's office, you're free to. I don't see a reason to, because we got town council's opinion.
Well, if you look at it too, we just had a discussion about having a new committee made for the building. So this group really should be called Department Head, where Heather meets with the department heads discussing department head things.
And there should be no board members invited and to weigh in?
Right.
I don't know, Heather, is that...
They're not a quorum, though.
Yeah, there's no quorum or anything here.
You just go back to the same thing again. We do a monthly board committee and commission meeting where I have a representative member from each of the board committee commissions. I never have a quorum from any group, and we talk about the same stuff department. It's a department head meeting. Like, you can call it whatever you want, you can call it Department Head 2.0. It's still a department head meeting.
I just didn't name it, and it says new construction group meeting, and that's the concern. It's just, what was the premise of what it was put out there for? What was the premise? If you have department meetings already, what was the premise of this one?
Who made it?
I'm sorry, I'm a bad name.
Boy, did you pick a bad name.
So then that brings a point. What was the premise of this meeting? If you already have department head meetings, what is the premise of this meeting? Why an additional one added?
Well, given the topic, it's kind of interesting, because it says new construction and they're talking about...
There's nothing in here.
And they're talking about demolition buildings and...
Ticketing.
And ticketing and...
Safe food to schools.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's like a department head meeting with a bad...
With a bad title.
So, but if you already have a department head meeting, what is this additional meeting for?
Is there a reason not to have another meeting? I mean, I'm just...
Yeah, because we got...
It's a separate meeting. It's a sub, it's kind of a different group of people. Because the folks who generally chime in on this, it's, you know, when we have, the original establishment, or the reason we began having these meeting groups in the first place was because we had a lot of new growth in the town and new building. And one of the problems we're having, as you may recall, is our departments don't always communicate well with each other. So Department A may have got a permit that Department B doesn't even know is even on the purview of existence. What happened is, once we started meeting for that, we realized that as a group, there were other things that they could, instead of having to have four people come to their office later in the day of different departments to have a discussion about condemning a building or a health crisis, they can actually talk about it with the same people and everyone, you know, if there's something to chime in about, or if you have a task in this you haven't followed up on, you can do so. We'd never, by any means, make any deliberations on bylaws, rules, regs, or anything like that. If things come up for discussion, like the driveway regulations, all it was is saying, you know, this is what we're looking at moving forward with, does anyone have any comments? Same difference goes for the piece with regards to the criminal ticketing piece. That was, this is what the board's looking at possibly pursuing. Is there a section on here that you need, don't have, or should have that we need to consider moving forward? It's the same thing. It's just, it's a different group. We have emergency management group meetings, same gig.
So the concern would be, you actually, during this group meeting, you paid for Larry Smith to draft a bylaw?
No.
There's a lot of misconception here, and I don't know where the misconception is going. The driveway regulation is simply a regulation that Randall had drafted. As far as the bylaws go, they were brought in by Larry from prior jobs. He did not draft anything for purposes of this meeting.
It says right here, it says, send to Larry Smith at PVC regulations for review. Discuss at new, next group meeting. And so if, what you're saying is true, there should be no bill anywhere for Larry Smith to do this work. Because as soon as you do that, you are now acting as a group, creating a plan or a legislation or a bylaw to move forward. And so what you had all said, sounds great, but I think the proof is in the pudding when but I think the proof is in the pudding, when you actually subcontracted Larry Smith from PVC to write this. Then it now becomes much more than board heads just discussing, you're actually taking actions and you're doing the next step.
We have already requested her to find out if he got paid and where he got paid from. We're re-reviewing this a second time.
Okay.
And I'm looking at 8:30, and we have a bunch of other things we still have to do.
I have to go to bed soon. It's late, I have to go to bed soon, so we have to move this along.
I'm done, it just, it doesn't smell right.
We'll get you some answers.
I mean, on here, it seems to me, Dan, and I'm reading it differently, that the regulations that Randall made up were sent to Larry just for his review, saying, what do you think of them? That's all I...
And his concern is if he gets paid to review.
I don't want to keep going.
But then if we go back to the recording, which is recording, Heather talks about Randall not developing this in a vacuum, it was well-vetted at a meeting, we actually invited Larry Smith, who brought his input, I mean, it's recorded, we can go back and look at that. Heather talks about actually negotiating and discussing, and Randall not creating this in a vacuum. So the way it's being projected right now is not the way it went down. Randall did not go home and write this and bring it over to everyone for a review. Larry Smith went away and charged us probably $225 an hour to go write this, and that's why it is so strict, because Larry Smith writes strict bylaws.
Well, that's what we're going to find out.
Okay. And then that is going to blow away this town or department head meeting, because it is not that, as soon as you start doing that stuff.
But if that's the case, we're going to find out.
Okay. I appreciate it, and I do have to move back to it.
Thank you for being so passionate about it, though, that's good. You brought it up.
I appreciate it.
Unfortunately, it's become a bit personal.
Yeah, we understand.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thanks, Dan.
I'll entertain a five-minute recess.
Okay.
You want a motion?
No, as long as you're all happy with it. That's it.
I'm happy.
Okay. Paul, we're taking a five-minute recess.